Well, good morning, everyone. Happy Tuesday to you. And Executive Director Mims, I was gonna say that music almost makes me wanna dance this morning. I like that what that music done. You know, we should've been doing the music as we allow folks to come into the meetings, make sure these meetings are not so stiff. I'm excited because guess what? This is the meeting before the last meeting of the... I don't wanna give that a round of applause. Come on. We're about to wrap this year up.
I need for them to keep running the music so that you can dance. Like, that's what I wanted.
Stay tuned and be here next week.
Oh.
Absolutely. Listen, happy Tuesday to you, and we are calling our meeting to order this morning. Today is Tuesday, December the 5th, and we do have just one more meeting in this calendar year to go. You're gonna hear more about that toward the end of the meeting this morning. But for right now, we still have the people's business to take care of. That being said, Commissioners, we are calling our meeting to order this morning, and we are starting with special recognition and presentations now, see? Is that right, Executive Director Rugg?
That is correct. We've got Mr. Kevin Hanna with us this morning with the CREDC.
All right. What a treat. Come on up, Mr. Kevin Hanna. He is our Executive Director of Economic Development with the Conyers-Rockdale Economic Development Council. We're glad and excited to have you come help us close out the year in the space of economic development. Commissioner Washington, this is your lane. This is your space.
I'm excited to be in this line. I'm excited.
All right.
Well, you'll see, we've done so much this year.
All right, well, Mr. Hanna, give us some good news.
Thank you all, first of all. I am even more excited to be here in front of you over the fact that we've really had a pretty good year in 2023, and I'm happy and again specifically excited to come before this body to talk about what we've done. And it's not even the end of the year. My hope, my expectation is to come back in January to give you a year-end summary of what actually happened for the entire year of 2023. With that, I'm gonna jump in. I'm going to provide for you what I consider kind of the highlights as of this date in December, but highlights for 2023. This is not everything we've done, but it should give you a pretty good idea and also kinda give you some idea of what we're looking to happen in 2024. First slide, project updates. I wanna start out with project updates because this is kind of our raise on debt. This is what we're here for. And I'll talk about both what's happened and what's kind of in the pipeline. Next slide, Liah Kim closing. Actually, I was gonna start with one at a time, but that's fine. The Liah Kim closing. Liah Kim is a longtime Conyers-Rockdale manufacturing company, been here for a while. During one of our visits, our, my, and Rita Braswell's visits to them last year, we learned that they were considering closing a portion of their local operations and moving it to another state, Kentucky specifically. We presented a deal which persuaded them to stay, not only stay, but increase their investment in Conyers-Rockdale. As a result, an additional $35 million will be invested in equipment by Liah Kim in Conyers-Rockdale, in the Conyers-Rockdale facility. Maybe more importantly, 50 jobs were retained, 50 jobs that were due to be shipped out to a different state were retained as a result of this deal. In addition, another 75 new jobs will be created by their staying in Conyers-Rockdale. That's a net of 125. One quick note about, not necessarily Liah Kim, but about existing companies. Strategists, folks consistently point to the fact that it's more important to keep what you have, to grow the companies that are already here than it is to try to go after new companies. The odds are just better in terms of growing what's here as opposed to planting new seeds and competing against other states, other regions, other counties for new business. It makes a whole lot more sense to invest funds. There's a much higher, in fact specifically, the quote was, "There's a much higher return on investment, ROI, by investing in companies that are already here as opposed to throwing money after possible new investments." So Liah Kim's a big win in that respect. Project Polo is the second on the list. Project Polo, as it was presented to us by the state earlier in the year, is actually the New Times Group. The New Times Group is a Hong Kong-based manufacturer of men's sportswear. New Times Group has decided to come to Conyers-Rockdale, and in fact, we spell R-I-T-A. We are working with them to get them straight with their necessary permits and approvals. They'll bring approximately 60 new jobs to Conyers-Rockdale. Project Spunk is a code word given to a company by the name of CompuLox. CompuLox has also made the decision to expand and come back to, or come to, Conyers-Rockdale. For the past three months or so, we've been working with them again very closely to help them obtain all the necessary permits and approvals for their location to Conyers-Rockdale. They'll bring approximately 20 new jobs to the state, to the county. Project Arabia.
Kevin, can I ask you a few minutes?
I'm sorry.
And what do they do?
CompuLox manufactures the holders, I guess, for laptops, the little things that you buy a laptop, you put it into, holders is not the correct term, but that's it, dock stations. Thank you very much.
That's technology services over there.
Thank you, technology services.
Full service.
But yeah, that's what they do.
Thank you.
I was surprised that Director Margaret Jackson didn't stand up on that one. He just knocked on your door, almost like the police. Absolutely. Making sure we have the right time. That was a good question, Commissioner Williams. Hanna, you're doing a fantastic job and to be able to break all this down and explain to us. Give it to us all the way in layman's terms. Love to make sure we know what you're talking about.
It's our pleasure.
Absolutely.
It's our pleasure. I look at this stuff all day, every day. The next one is a big one, Project Arabia, as it was presented to us. Project Arabia is DC Blocks. This is the data center development. Just to give you an update on where we are with this, a revised and final memorandum of understanding between the Development Authority of Rockdale County and DC Blocks has been signed. Last week, in fact, DC Blocks closed on the purchase of the Farmer Road property. So it now owns that property and money has exchanged hands. That is the single most important element of a deal like this. When money actually changes hands, that speaks to that entity's commitment to actually doing the deal. The Development Authority of Rockdale County Board authorized $800 million of bond financing for the three phases, three planned phases of the construction. And then importantly, yesterday, literally yesterday, the courts went ahead and validated the bonds. So the bonds have been validated, the property has been purchased. The only thing that needs to happen now is for DC Blocks to actually close on the sale of the bonds. That will happen in the first quarter of next year for reasons that are unique to DC Blocks, but I say all that to say this, that this deal is set up and primed now to close.
So can we talk about...
Construction should start early next year.
Can we talk about DC Blocks? Because people don't understand what a big deal this is for this county. We worked so hard for this deal, and I'm so proud of not just the Conyers-Rockdale Economic Development Council, but our Development Authority, the county, us, like, it was everybody coming together, the community that they were able to go into. And let me, if I may, tell the story because this speaks to why I love this county. When DC Blocks came, they came with wanting to buy one tract of land, but they were interested in buying another piece of land, but they thought that there was gonna be a lot of opposition to them getting the property from the community. So we went and had community conversations, education pieces, and by the time we finished, the community was on board because they understood what a data center complex, not just one data center, but now it's three. We actually have the opportunity to get four, but it looks like it might be three, but we're okay with a billion dollars' worth of investment and not more. But anyway, the community was...
The community actually supported.
Supported.
They came to this, well, to the planning committee meeting and spoke on behalf of this project.
So now, what we will have in Rockdale County is the eastern portion of the ring of technology that this company is gonna have around the city of Atlanta. And the ability, when you have that kind of technology, it brings other high-tech companies to the region. So this is our coup de grace for the year, for probably the decade, because we worked very, very hard to make sure that everything was working with all cylinders. The county came through like champions under the leadership of the chairman, making sure that all the permits were together, that we had first-class service. They are so appreciative, so everything worked together for this big, this is huge. They say 800 million, that's the floor of the investment that these companies will have in this county, so it's gonna be upward of 800 million. So this is, this is big for the county.
It's huge. It's huge, not just in terms, well, especially in terms of the floor, hey, 800 million dollars, but that floor is gonna serve as kind of a foundation for an ecosystem.
Right. And that's real property. We're not talking about, we haven't even gotten into the personal property. And the big thing about data centers is we, they have to buy electricity, and you know, we still get sploshed, e-sploshed, and host money from their electricity. So we're super excited about this project.
There's the real estate, there's another for each data center built, and right now there are at least three, possibly four. There will be a minimum of $180 billion in equipment that will go into each data center in addition to the electricity that's bought on the megawatt level on an annual basis, which will provide e-splosh, splosh.
And of course, we have to thank Georgia Power also because they came in. Of course, they're excited to have this much electricity, but they had to build the facilities in order to house this much electricity, so we're very excited.
That's Project Arabia and DC Block. Project Spark is a company that was bought to us by the state. In fact, these last two are companies that were bought to us by the state. Project Spark is an advanced manufacturing company. I'm not deliberately to be more specifically, more specific than that, but their customers include Duke Power in the Carolinas, Florida Power and I, Georgia Power Company. They estimate that they'll create approximately 450 new jobs in Conyers-Rockdale. This is one that's still up in the air. In other words, they have not made a final decision just yet, but Conyers-Rockdale is in the final four, among the finalists for Project Spark. Next slide, please.
Yeah, they won't let me go after them. You know, I wanna go talk to the people and bring them in, but he won't let me go, so...
Project Serenity is the next one. Project Serenity, and here, before I get into Project Serenity, I need to preface this with saying, the reason the State Department of Community and Economic Development contacted us about this prospect is they told us specifically because we went with them and we showed up and showed off in Boston. Because Boston is the site of the biochem, annual biochem gathering. Next year, it'll be in San Diego, but we shared the complex with the state and had a lot of folks come by. The state is now convinced of our commitment to these kinds of projects. Project Serenity is a life sciences project, and again, I can't be more specific than that. Life Sciences Project, which entails the recruitment of a pharmaceutical manufacturing facility that will add over 400 jobs in Phase 1 of what they're looking to do. After our submission of our initial proposal, a consultant came back with some additional questions. We've answered those questions and are told that we are, again, among the final four, final four for Project Serenity. Again, that could be huge for all kinds of reasons, again, not the least of which is it lays the foundation for similar-type companies to come to Conyers-Rockdale. 400 new jobs in the first phase.
And these, so one of the reasons why we selected the life sciences industry as an industry to pursue is because their, the median income for a life sciences job is $92,000. It has everything in the spectrum. You go from manufacturing to research and development. It has the entire, everything is there, and it can touch, I'm sorry, we have the school system on board that's ready to create curriculums that can pump into that industry. Plus, we are perfectly situated in Conyers-Rockdale County, where we have the airport 45 minutes away, we have all of the schools, all of the colleges, UGA Tech, the AU Center, Agnes got everything right here in the county. Plus, we have the, we've, I'm sorry, talked to a couple of landowners that are interested in us using their land so that we can really create a life sciences campus. And when we went to Boston, like you said, we really showed the state of Georgia that this is something that we're serious about, that we were committed to, and this is the first big opportunity that we have to move in that direction. So once again, he won't let me go talk to him because I'm ready. I really want that, but...
It's a distinct possibility. We're all praying and keeping our fingers crossed. Next slide, or next, last project is Project Penny. Project Penny has been on our radar for the longest among all of these. Project Penny is an Eastern European firm which converts extracted copper into battery material. Battery as in this-size battery, battery as in car battery material. Our latest information from Penny is that it's still viable because it's actually located in Eastern Europe, and so they're having issues with the war with Ukraine. But that notwithstanding, it's still a viable project. We are in this one among, we're in the championship with this. It's us at a South Carolina firm or a South Carolina site that is dueling for this particular firm.
Can I say something about Project Penny?
Absolutely.
So Project Penny is the project that kind of let the state of Georgia know that we are serious about economic development. The way we all came together, when they came to visit, we had the school board on board, we had all of us, we had the Development Authority, and we did such a great presentation. It was after Project Penny that other state entities, other state opportunities really started taking a hard look at Rockdale County, so...
That's a great point because everybody from water to fire to police to sheriff, everybody that had anything to do with economic development were there, and whether they were called upon or not, they were there. And the Project Penny folks, and more importantly, the consultants saw that they were there and we were prepared. And like you said, that's kind of what kind of catapulted us higher in the state's hierarchy. Next slide, please. So what does all that mean? Next slide. This represents over a billion dollars in new investment. Next slide, over 1,000 new, again, well-paying jobs. Next slide, and maybe more important than everything else, millions of dollars of new non-residential tax revenues.
That deserves a round of applause.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. And then lastly, next slide, as I said, this creates an ecosystem of sorts for new investment throughout the county, new investment specifically for tech-savvy and tech-related type companies throughout the county and throughout the city. Next slide. One of the more important things that was tasked to me in my office was to get out and visit more, or visit local companies. That visit to Liah Kim was a perfect example of the importance of getting out and doing this, and I wanted to include this slide just to kind of provide a sample of the companies we visited thus far in 2023. Next slide. Another priority that was given to me and Crete was to develop better relationships with federal, state, and local government. That's a slide that shows the visits we've made with those, well, folks representing those particular entities, and I can tell you honestly that we are now on a first-name basis with each one of those organizations, whereas that was not the case this time last year. Next slide, just about done. Advancing Rockdale. This is a task that was assigned to myself and staff, and I show that, that particular slide there because that is the first page of a report that was completed by the Carl Vinson Institute back in 2021. Strategy for Economic Development in Conyers/Rockdale was the name of it. At about the same time of its relief, release, COVID hit and shut everything down. And so that, that report was literally shelved. We've taken it off the shelf, dusted it off, taken a look at it, and surprisingly, a lot of the same things that were recommended in that plan still apply. Some don't. It's our task, my task, to go back and basically reevaluate that plan and come back to the Crete Board and to you all in turn with a new revised strategic plan for the next three to five years or so. Commissioner, did you wanna comment on that at all?
No. I'm on the committee, let's be like that.
Thank you. That's actually very important. She represents the county. Eric Fears represents the city. Dr. Boyle, I wanna say, is gonna represent the Development Authority, and Dr. Fountain kind of represents Conyers-Rockdale in general. Next slide, please. Workforce development. This has become, obviously, a catchword, but a very important issue around the country, but particularly here in Rockdale County. Rita Braswell was brought on board a year ago, last October, to spearhead our efforts in refining both our efforts and our message when it comes to workforce development. And Rita's really done an outstanding job, ask anybody. Human Resources Roundtable, the first thing listed up there is an initiative whereby we bring in human resource professionals from local companies to talk about their specific issues and to brainstorm about how to solve those issues. The second point up there I wanna make particular note of, given Commissioner Williams's efforts in this respect, Returning Citizens Program with Rockdale County Sheriff's Department. We're working closely with the Sheriff's Department and Georgia Piedmont Technical College to enhance existing programs and to bring about new programs. Right now, we need people all over the place, and we need to start looking in places where others are not looking in order to find folks to fill the jobs. And this is a perfect example of our kind of, you know, going outside of the lines to fill the need.
Can I jump in on this one?
Absolutely.
So with this program, the citizens of the Sheriff's Department, no, not Department, the inmates, will go through the program with Georgia Piedmont Technical College, and they'll actually have a certification, not just anything, they're certified in advanced manufacturing or certified in whatever, that they can actually take to a job, and then workforce development with Conyers-Rockdale County is going to do, place them in actual... workforce development with Conyers/Rockdale County is going to do, place them in actual high-paying jobs, and our hopes is to have, to of course, reduce the recidivism. So far, the, we're working on the rollout, but I think they had six people that qualified, so I think this starts in January, and I'm extremely excited about this, this particular program because it's putting all of that together and coming up with a, a project.
And, and so, as, as I'm listening to this, I'm thinking about how that is just one component of an entire wraparound services
What?
and support, so that somebody doesn't think they're just coming out of jail and going to work. There's, there's a whole system with our stepping up initiative that supports those people in family relations, in mental health, in addictions, in economic, you know, stability, all of that. So, it, it creates, this is just kind of like the linchpin of creating stability for another person and for their family.
One other thing, and, and this kind of came about with the work of the, of the chairman, ARC will actually bond individuals who come through this program up to a certain amount against theft or anything like that, so as to give a potential employer, you know, additional confidence in hiring somebody who came specifically through this program.
Okay.
I'm going to try to move on quickly, I only have two, two or three more slides, I promise you. We've, this is important, I want to do, I do want to touch on the US Department of Labor and the EV Training Program as, again, part of a linchpin program to provide services for the EV industry. We are working with Department of Labor, in fact, this jumps down to the last bullet on this page, Department of Labor, Rockdale County Public Schools, RCA, Georgia Piedmont Technical College, to establish an EV training program. And the goal of the training program is to teach people to service electric vehicles. We've identified the Restoration Storehouse as a potential site for it. We are diligently following up on potential sources for building out Restoration Storehouse for this particular purpose. They are very excited, Restoration that is, very excited about the idea of our coming there, as is Georgia Piedmont Technical College. Last slide. Mega sports, in terms of new business, Mega Sports Facility Project. We are in deep negotiations with not one, but two mega sports facility organizations. The concepts around which we're, we're discussing are very similar to the battery in Atlanta for Truist Park in that the development would provide for sports entertainment, housing, retail, and hotel space. Each of these facilities would provide over two hundred things, I'm sorry, two hundred new jobs, and maybe more importantly, something for, something more for people to do in Conyers/Rockdale. Data Center, Technology Center campuses, we've talked about that, Commissioner's touched on the idea of our creating campuses for technology as well as perhaps data centers and/or pharmaceutical-type facilities. Talked about the EV and our partnership with Georgia Piedmont Tech, RCA, Training Facility. Lastly, new mixed-use destinations. We're working with several developers on two possible sites, and again, I can't go into a whole lot more detail on these, but two new mixed-use destination sites elsewhere in the county. And these are important for what I, what I call the putting the "V" in Village. V, we want people to visit, want more folks to visit Conyers/Rockdale County. I, we want folks, we want companies to invest more in Rockdale County. And L, we want folks to live in Rockdale County. VIL. These mixed-use destinations, the mega sports complexes, the types of jobs that we're talking about, all lend themselves towards that VIL goal set by, by Cretezy. Lastly, I want to thank all of you, really I do, not just the, the board, but the staff. I look around at folks whose, in whose offices I have literally sat and had these kinds of discussions over the past year, eighteen months or so. Thank you all for your willingness to work with Cretezy to make Cardwell, Rockdale County specifically, a better place to live, work, and play. And with that, I'm open for questions, if any.
I don't think I have any questions, but I will say, this has been an absolute pleasure, been ups and downs, but it's been a great pleasure to work with Cretezy. Just from where, where we started to where we are now is, is tremendously amazing, and, you know, I mean, next year I will be the chair, so I, I have, I have things in store. So, I'm, I'm, I'm ready and excited that there's so much momentum going on in economic development, and this is, to me, this is the, we're still on the floor, there's still so much more that we can be doing. And we will do in the next year, so.
So, I love it when you come and give us an update. I just, it just thrills me to see the progress that we've made in just a couple of years. I, I think one of the, the notes that I took was that after listening to all of the update, project updates, the biggest thing I saw was diversifying our economic base, and that was a real priority for me because we were so limited in the different areas, and should one of those areas, you know, have a downturn, it would be devastating. You know, you always want to be diverse so that you can compensate, and that was a, that is really a very diverse group of projects. And I'm looking forward to the next year, I think we're going to see lots of good things.
As are we, in a big way.
Well, listen, I, I'm a little surprised, slightly shocked that Commissioner Washington really didn't just bounce all of, out of her seat. This was, without question, a lot of great news, all of it was great news, about what's happening in and around Conyers/Rockdale County. When we talk about economic development, I think it's important to make sure that people can define who you are and what agency you work with. We use the acronym Cretezy, but truly that stands for Conyers/Rockdale Economic Development Council. Mr. Hannah serves as the Executive Director of our Economic Development Council. He serves to, as a liaison and advocate on behalf of the City of Conyers in Rockdale County, which also includes the Rockdale County Public School System. Also want to give a big shout out to Ms. Rita, who's sitting in the back flanking him. She has been very instrumental. The part that I really zoomed in on this morning was about the workforce development. That is a running theme across the country. I just came back from a NACO trip in Minnesota, and one of the things that, the highlight of the trip was about workforce development and what we need to do to prepare our workforce, particularly our young people, and really the, the local entities between city government, county government, and the school systems need to come together. They got a wonderful platform, I'm going to be talking to you more about that because I took some copious notes while I was there, and we're going to make sure we connect the dots. Sometimes other people are already doing great things, and we don't have to reinvent the wheel, we just can pick up a few pieces from them. Now, I want to shift a little bit, because Commissioner Washington has held up the torch and the bloodstained banner as it comes to, now, y'all give her a round of applause, absolutely. Yes, yes. The Commissioner referenced the fact that she will be serving as the Chair of the Economic Development Council on next year, and that we can anticipate seeing very good things, so many good things coming from her leadership. Well, she's done an excellent job in her leadership, making sure that she pushed the envelope as it relates to economic development, working very closely with Mr. Hannah and Ms. Rita and their team over there to make sure that Rockdale County is not left out of the room, not left out of the conversation, that we have a seat at the table. I'm going to shift again. All of the internal support from our departments, every department in Rockdale County, I'm going to start with Planning and Development, y'all give Planning and Development a round of applause. Every department in Rockdale County plays a very intimate role and integral part of making this come together. But there's no department like Planning and Development where the rubber meets the road. When you talk about business, business development, permitting, and making sure all of these things come together. It is the leadership of Director Enjoko who able, who's able to bring in Water Department, Stormwater Department, our Fire Department, and all of our entities to make sure that any new business in Rockdale County are all on board with permitting and making sure that we're meeting the codes. Leadership of the Director along with her two deputies, Deputy Wheeler, as well as Deputy Chala, give Planning and Development another round of applause. Now, particularly on the DC Blocks Project, we needed to have someone that was internally on our team to make sure that we gave them sort of a white glove VIP treatment from A through Z. Again, that's where Planning and Development came in to make sure that we did not skip a beat. It's so critical that we talk about the importance of these code names. Many people are watching and listening to this broadcast, they see all the code names, Project Penny, Project this, that, or the other. Well, let me explain to you why we have the code names. Major deals that are coming through in the community cannot be revealed as they are going through the process mill, so we have to identify them with code names. Oftentimes, if too much, TMI, too much information get out too soon, too quick, it could really interrupt the deal. Getting so many people involved and giving out too much information could really create a problem. Let me explain it to you differently. Rockdale County is the second smallest county of one hundred and fifty-nine counties in the state of Georgia. You need to know that we're not called Rockdale for nothing. We have a lot of rock all over this community, and we don't have a lot of available land space left and available in Rockdale County. You need to know that. You being who? The general public. Oftentimes, people call us or text me and say, "Mr. Chairman, how come this project is going down to Newton County? Why are they getting this in Walton County? How come Henry County?" Because they have land and space available, and they don't have the rock. So, we have, we have to make sure that we're monitoring all of our assets, our number-one asset. This is just a point of education. Our number-one asset is our water, water resources. We've got to make sure we have enough water for our residents, for our businesses, and for the Fire Department when they hook the hose to the hydrant. All of these things have to be monitored. Once again, that's where Director Enjoko comes in. She has the ability to pool all of our resource, resources together to make sure that with the capacity and the amount of resources, particularly the utilities, that we have what we need. We cannot sell what we don't have, and we can't sell something that's going to take away from our residents and our current businesses. We are paying attention. Economic development, for me, is right next to public safety. We have to have economic development in this community. The other biggest thing that I took away from this presentation this morning, Mr. Hannah, and thank you again, is the fact that we are now about to really, I don't know whether you all paid attention to the numbers, but we're about to really bolster up the tax digest in Rockdale County. That's what people have been constantly talking about. One more way, let me give it to you like this. The more rooftops, the chairman is saying it. What are rooftops? Homes, houses, people who can afford the three-hundred-thousand-dollar homes, people who can afford the twenty-five-hundred-dollar rent. Well, everybody can't afford that, but guess what? If we've got people who, who can afford that coming into our community, guess what's coming next? The high-end restaurants you've been asking for, the arts, culture, and entertainment you've been asking for, because when we bolster up the tax digest, we raise the median household income. And by the way, in case you want to know, the median household income right now today is only a measly sixty-six thousand dollars a year. We need it where? I'm glad you asked. Somewhere about eighty-two thousand dollars a year. Economic development, I could talk all day about this, is very important in Rockdale County. I want to make sure that you're taking notes and that you're paying attention, because we have so many people running throughout our community running their mouth, don't know what they're talking about, and saying the wrong thing, misleading and giving misinformation. We have a strategic plan, we're working very closely with Conyers/Rockdale Economic Development Council, Commissioner Washington is leading the way in that space, and we are supporting it. All of our departments are on board, the Fire Department, Planning and Development, every unit inside of Rockdale County. This is a great presentation. These numbers impact our future and what we're talking about in terms of revenue. As I was watching Executive Director Barclay, who is our Chief Tax Assessor, he knows more than anyone sitting in this room, the impact of what this is going to bring for Rockdale County. For all those people, particularly the naysayers, we want you to be educated and informed about what's really going on in Rockdale County. And as I wrap this piece up, let me wrap it up on this. When we talk about Commissioner Washington, Commissioner Williams, reimagine Rockdale County. The reimagine is answering the questions and the concerns from the community, the restaurants, the hotels, the amenities. Well, reimagine what I'm asking you to do. Rethink about the future of Rockdale County. If we want to have what the reasons we're giving people to travel westbound toward Atlanta, we've got to bring in the kind of tax base that will allow us to have it. We cannot stay the same. We can't stay the same. If you want nice restaurants, you want nice amenities, you've got to have a tax base of people who can afford it, because companies do what is called a feasibility study. They want to determine before that they set up shop in Rockdale County, can we afford to set this kind of restaurant in this county? Well, we'll have a big grand opening for about six months, and everybody and their momma will come to the restaurant, but we can't be sustained only for six months. Can we be sustained for twenty years? Can we set up a shop and make that kind of investment that will be here? I hope this response not only highlights economic development and highlights the work of Commissioner Washington, but I hope it educates and informs so many people who are listening and watching so they can connect the dots. The reason why we have to have this type of growth and this level of growth is so that we can bring the community what it needs and what it's want. I don't want this to turn into, I haven't said this in a while, but I'm going to say it as I wrap it up, I want Rockdale County to remain Rockdale County. I don't want to be any other county or like any other county in the metro. Let me give you a few shout-outs. I don't want to be of the Cap County. I don't want to be City of the Level. I don't want to be Fulton County. I don't want to be Gwinnett. I don't want to be Henry. I don't want to be Walton, don't want to be Newton. I'm glad Newton is next door, I'm glad Rivian is coming, because we're going to get the benefit of that as well. But what I want us to be is who we are, Rockdale County. Let's give economic development a round of applause. Mr. Hannah, you're finishing up strong, and we appreciate that, and that means that you're setting the groundwork for how you have to start 2024.
And you know what?
With Commissioner Washington as your partner, you all ought to be dynamite.
That, that brings up one, a great point, last point I'll make, is the pipeline. When I got here a couple of years ago, the pipeline was basically dry. Now, we've got a billion dollars in the pipeline, and we're strategically and perfectly set up for 2024. So, Lord willing, this time next year, hopefully we'll have even bigger things to report and rejoice on. Thank you all again for your contribution.
So, I, I was just going to make one more comment, and that is, if we're bringing that many jobs and that higher level, we have to talk about housing.
Absolutely.
And housing, you know, there has to be more. And housing, you know, there has to be more housing. We know that there's a deficit, and like you said, there are people who are saying, you know, we're building too much, stop the build. You know, if we're going to move forward and be progressive, we've got to have places for these employees to live.
So that, the, I've said it over and over again, housing is where jobs go to sleep at night. So if you're gonna bring in the jobs, you have to have a place for the jobs to go to sleep at night, for the jobs' family, their children, the job holders' children to sleep at night where they feel safe, where they get a quality education. So with all of this economic development, we have to have the people to sustain it. The people are working, we're not doing this for machines. We're doing this so that we can have people living here, creating a culture of, of positive economic turnover. And, and that takes people, and that takes people living in this county that are going to be living in the housing that we are creating. So, yes.
Well, Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Washington, both of you are spot on. If you, if any of you all have traveled in the last six months down Interstate sixteen towards Savannah in Bryan County, the Hyundai plant is building a brand-new manufacturing facility. As I sit on the Board of Managers with the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, during our meeting in Jekyll Island a couple, a month or so ago, one of the things the chairman of Bryan County said, that they're, they're excited. In fact, Executive Director Holmes, they're super excited about the fact that the Hyundai facility is building this mega plant. But he said that his biggest deficit is the fact they don't have housing for the people that's gonna have to work in this facility. And what that really means is that a lot of folks in the surrounding areas throughout the Chatham County, in the Bullock County area, are going to be employed at this facility. And then there's gonna be folks leaving other areas, moving down there to take advantage of some of those jobs. He talked about the average job paying seventy-five thousand dollars a year, the average job. Now you think about the least thing inside that plant, that manufacturing plant that a person can do from a custodian all the way up to the top level. He said the least would be seventy-five thousand dollars. Well, you gotta have housing in order to have those, to be able to carry the workforce and make sure they have a place that's in immediate proximity of this facility. This is a deficit for Rockdale County. I know for some of the folks who've been here a long time, it is, there's a lot of change involved in seeing all the sprouting up of new housing subdivisions and townhouses and what have you. But I'm saying as you're watching, look at the price point. The excitement that I have is the price point, because by the time they get half of the units constructed and up, people are moving into them. And they may not be everybody that's living here, but some folks that are coming in who can afford to pay them, and they're living and, and moving into them. When we get more of these units, units being these opportunities for economic development with these businesses that Mr. Hannah shared with us this morning, the more of those come into our community, we get our workforce ready and prepared to embrace those opportunities, the more we can have people making that money, earning that money, who actually are from Rockdale and live in Rockdale. This is an announcement to tell you to get yourself workforce ready. Get ready, because it's coming. Rivian is coming to Newton County. I am just as excited as the chairman of Newton County, because all those people can't live down there. We have, and all of us are not gonna shop, eat and play down there either. We're gonna be ready. I, I, I won't be at the ribbon cutting, but I'll be standing off in the far distance doing like this to Rivian coming down to Newton County. Again, this is a great day for economic development, another great day for Rockdale County. Give them another round of applause as they enter the building. Commissioner Washington, you've knocked the ball out of the park. It's a seven fifty-five Hank Aaron home run this morning on economic development. Thank you. I want to take a moment to really say thank you for your hard work and your leadership of, of, of working with all of our internal departments and working very closely with Mr. Hannah as you ushered him into the community this morning. I don't know who or what is next, but that was a, a rock star of a presentation this morning, Executive Director Rutledge. I'm so excited. I've gotten off track. Tell us what's next.
So we've got something just as exciting. It will be the Transit Development Plan presentation, which goes hand in hand with economic development. So we have our dot.
All right, all right. It's all on you, Deputy Director Solomon.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I actually couldn't have asked for a better segue to our presentation right now, because Mr. Hannah ended up talking about, he ended his presentation talking about living, working, and playing in Rockdale County. And another way to do that and to promote that is providing transit to our residents. So our, my presentation today is to cover our Transit Development Plan that we've been working on over the course of the last year. Next slide, please. Thank you. The Atlanta region, can you hear me okay? Okay. The Atlanta Region Transit Link Authority, which is the ATL, they serve as the Transit Governing Board for the Atlanta Region. Since Rockdale County is part of the Atlanta Region, the ATL generously provided us the opportunity to be able to come up with a Transit Development Plan. The reason for this is they have transit in the Atlanta metro. We do not. We have certain transit services through senior services, and those are specific types of transit opportunities for veterans and seniors. So we don't have transit available to our general public. Audra Rojek is here in attendance today to represent our incredible consultant team. They were from VHB and the collaborative firm, and she's here to answer any questions at the end if you have any that I cannot. By partnering with the ATL Authority to create this Transit Development Plan, Rockdale County will have access to funding opportunities we would not have on our own. I say that because one example of this is the Urban Area Formula Funding Program. Through this program, Rockdale County has accumulated about one point eight million dollars in federal funds over the past five years. We haven't been able to access these funds because we don't have transit services to spend it on. These funds are specific to transit. They cannot be used for anything else. Next slide, please. Through the planning process, next slide. The point of this plan is to make sure that we have a plan tailored to Rockdale County specifically. Therefore, consultants use statistics specific to Rockdale County to deter, to determine what type of transit would benefit our residents the most. So of course you need to know a little bit about Rockdale County to plan for transit for our county. Next slide. They identified areas that are most likely to use transit based on where people live, work, and play. So again, tying that to Mr. Hannah's presentation, we, we started with figuring out where do people live? Where are people going to shop? Where are they going to, to work? How can we best serve those residents? Next slide. Of course, we can't create a plan solely based on statistics, so we reached out to the public. We hosted three public meetings, attended several outdoor events, and conducted two surveys. The first round of surveys only resulted in three hundred and sixty-nine results or in responses. So for the second survey, we really stepped it up. We included a flyer in the Department of Water Resources water bill. We made flyers available at several key locations that people visit throughout the county. And we even posted on our, our, our social media accounts. I think that really helped us get some responses. We also provided locations for residents to be able to fill out hard copies of the survey, which we heard was a big thing that they wanted. People that didn't want to go online to fill out the survey could go to Johnson Park, the library, a couple other locations to fill these surveys out. So that helped us get over a thousand responses that second round.
Very good.
Next slide, please. And now the plan itself. The Transit Development Plan itself is a forty-page document. So if I stood here and told you all about the plan, I would be here all day. So with that said, we do have a website that'll be at the end of the presentation. You can go to actually look at the plan itself. I don't believe it's posted yet, but should be soon. But this, this plan recommends, it has recommendations for implementing transit in Rockdale County, of course. And the recommendation ultimately that was made was to utilize a turnkey micro-transit service. The term turnkey means that we would contract with a fully operational transit service. They own, maintain, will own and maintain the fleet. They employ the drivers and operate the scheduling and payment methods. So they really do it all. This is the perfect way to implement a pilot, so we can try it out without investing too much in capital cost. The serviceable area will include key shopping centers, Justin Park, sorry, Johnson Park, Costly Mill Park, and Event Center, the Restorative Justice Center, many medical buildings, and, and much, much more. If this is your first time hearing the term micro-transit, it operates very, operates very similar to an Uber or a Lyft service where it picks you up at an exact location and takes you where you want to go. It's a lot more of a personal type of service than a fixed route, which is your typical bus stop to bus stop type service. By comparing similar services from other local jurisdictions, a lot of other local jurisdictions use this micro-transit service, the estimated annual cost for this service for the area that we're looking at is about eight hundred thousand dollars. So, next slide. With that said, we looked at some funding strategies. And going back to the beginning of my presentation, I mentioned that there are federal funds for us to access. As a local agency using these funds, we're required to contribute a twenty percent local match. Partnering with the city of Conyers to contribute a portion of that local match, the county's estimated contribution would be roughly a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars annually. So this slide illustrates the magnitude of that contribution when compared to other services that the county provides. Next slide. And finally, the Transit Development Plan also outlines how to measure the success of the pilot program and offers strategies for expansion. There are many options when it comes to expanding transit to fit the needs of our residents and improving connectivity to the surrounding areas. So a lot of these expansion options are either expanding the zone in which we serve our, with our micro-transit service, also implementing in the future some fixed bus route services, actually building bus stops and having those fixed routes, offering certain rides to the airport, which was a one that we heard a lot from residents. I know those lifts can be really costly.
No, go ahead. Sixty dollars is what I paid for a
Oh, yeah.
Ride from my house to the airport.
Right, exactly.
Yes, each way.
Yeah.
Raising my hand.
Yeah. And, and just to give you an idea of the cost of the service, it'd be around two fifty to three dollars per ride, depending. You know, all of that we haven't completely ironed out yet, but that is what's suggested to implement this plan. So a three-dollar car ride versus a sixty-dollar one is very good. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Washington.
So I asked this question when this was presented to us, and I want, because there are people like me before I got the answer that would think, so you're putting more cars on the road to offer transportation assistance to people who might not have it? So how is that helping somebody who, like me, who detest traffic? How is that helping me in my transit woes besides the trip to the airport?
Well, as far as reducing the number of trips on the road, it doesn't, unless it acts like a carpool type of, type of thing. So if all of us here want to go to the same destination, and we're picking me up first, and then, you know, each of you on the way there, it takes those, those four vehicles and reduces it down to one. So that's really the only way that it does reduce the trips. But it's really providing the services to people who don't have access to a vehicle. Maybe they're out of a vehicle for the week and they need
Well, I may not want to ride with you. I just want to get my own individual Uber type.
That's your loss. Not riding with me.
But it really does tie into what the previous discussion was about bringing in all these new jobs, and, you know, maybe they just don't have the means to get there right away.
And that's what I was wanting to also say. I'm excited about that, the fact that it gives the opportunity to help people who don't have transportation go to, we've talked about the workforce development. I mean, the work, you know, the workforce development initiative with the Sheriff's Department. Hopefully, we can utilize all of these services. There's a, a sector where we can probably advance some, some tokens or whatever, so credits, so that they can have some free transportation to get them started. I'm excited about the fact that hopefully with a program like this, it would keep mothers from having to walk down the street with their babies and their groceries and all of those things. Keep people that I see walking up and down the street in the rain trying to go to work, give them some kind of safe transportation to and from their work. So I'm excited about this. I just wanted to, you know, just make sure that everybody's questions were answered, yeah.
Commissioner Williams?
So as, as Commissioner Washington was talking, I was thinking that is one level of service is for those who have no transportation currently. That's a big need, a big need. I heard about that yesterday in a meeting with someone representing our accountability courts, that, that sometimes that transportation is a problem. I also am thinking though, when you, when we move to the next level, when Rivian is up and people are living here, and we're talking about young professionals, I can see them wanting transportation down, you know, down the interstate twenty miles instead of having to drive back and forth.
Right. And actually, to your point, Director Kelly has had conversations with the director of Newton County and wanting to have that connectivity in the future. And so to your point, there's so many ways that we can expand on this pilot, this very small pilot, to be able to provide those types of services you're mentioning.
Right. And then for students who want to attend Georgia State, again, just down the interstate, about eighteen exits or less to Georgia State campus, you know, that, that could be huge.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I have read, I've gotten halfway through the forty pages of the, of the plan. And I'm, I'm really excited about it. I think it really opens up opportunities. People are always surprised that a community our size has nothing. And so I feel like we're just playing catch-up at this point to where, where we should have been years ago. But I think it's gonna, you know, I think it's gonna be really good.
Great.
Deputy Director Solomon, thank you for this presentation and this update about transportation, and particularly transit and mobility here in Rockdale County. To the point from Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams, this, this impacts quality of life in Rockdale County. As you approached the podium this morning, you talked about this being a perfect segue to, from Mr. Hannah's presentation. Transit plus economic development equals success. There's a different mindset, and you're absolutely correct. Uh, there's a different mindset, and you're absolutely correct, Commissioner Williams, uh, from the way people were thinking just really five, ten years ago here in Rockdale County about the whole idea and the thought of transit in our community. Well, we have a totally different, uh, workforce of people and the young people are going after transportation needs a whole lot different. Uh, you could start with the fact that a lot of young people don't, uh, are not excited about getting driver's licenses at, at fifteen, sixteen years old as some of us old schools were back in the day. Uh, we didn't have the options of Uber and Lyft to, uh, limousines around the different places. But even with some of the, uh, the folks in, in more seasoned demographic may not, they, they need to know that they have an option. This brings it some options, uh, to getting around to some of the places. I like the point of interest that was in your presentation about the places where we'll be picking up and dropping off because that's very, very important. Then Commissioner Washington talking about, um, the parents of the young mothers who are walking up and down the roads with children and groceries, that's a safety issue right there, but it gives them options. And once upon a time in Rockdale County, there wasn't a really big need for this. We're here now, we need a quality of life. But then the biggest part is the last part of my who, what, when, why, how, why is the cost. There's a cost involved. It positively impacts economic development. It also encourages the u- the growth of our young people and gives them opportunities and more options. It takes care of seniors and I like what you talked about with, uh, the Uber Lyft type situation. It's more personal for those people who have personal situations. They may not need to be on a bus or a van. They need to be in a single, one-on-one type situation. So there's plenty of options here. Uh, we've been talking about this for a long time and I don't want to close this out without giving a big shout out to Director Kelly and his leadership yielding to Deputy Director Solomon and allowing her to champion his calls from her wheelhouse. Let's give R.D. a round of applause.
Can, can I, um, add?
Yes.
To R.D., um, you know, this is the end of my seventh year and we first started, when I first started, transportation in Rockdale County was almost nonexistent. They weren't coming to us. We had to come to, the chairman has made his almost, um, calling to make sure that we were heard, not just on a local level, on a state level, on a national level. When we went to DC, we were at the United States Department of Transportation, sitting in their offices, talking about transportation projects, trying to do transportation for Rockdale County. This year, when we had our transportation summit and we saw all of the millions of dollars that's gonna be invested in this county over the neck, last five years, that is what the, the, um, the light bulb, what is the light bulb? Went off in my head saying, showing that it's finally come. We have the courtesy Parkway, we have one thirty-eight about to finally go under construction. You got things on, on Highway twenty, Sigma Road, not just the phase that we're in, but all the way down to one thirty-eight. And that's because of advocacy. That's because somebody standing in pe- senators faces, um, all of our representatives faces, our, our, everybody. If they don't know anything else, they know that this chairman is going to advocate for transportation. That's why we have all these great transportation projects. And thank you, Director Kelly, for all of your hard work on transportation because it's finally, y'all, it's finally happening. It's like we can finally at least see the sign of relief.
Commissioner, I certainly appreciate all of what you're saying.
One, one more thing. And, and when people look for economic development, y'all people, they want to move their goods and services through the county. They don't want it just to get stuck here. They looking for how it's gonna get in and get out of this county. And transportation is so integral to it, so that's a big part of it. So now I'm done. And we can go home now.
Well, before you leave the podium, thank you again Deputy Director Solomon and thank you for your attendance to this work and for the leadership coming from Director Kelly. Uh, I, I get excited when our department directors, um, understand the value of leadership by yielding to those, uh, who are in other leadership roles that are part of their team. Uh, you see, it's not about the person in charge getting the spotlight or the credit. It's about the teamwork and teamwork makes the dream work. And, and that's really not just a cliche, but it's real and it's real in Rockdale County. I wrap up by saying this, uh, the Commissioner, Commissioner Washington is exactly right. Uh, throughout the Atlanta Regional Commission as we serve, uh, I made it very plain and clear in twenty seventeen that I didn't need just a seat at the table, but I needed a voice in the room. Um, three months ago, the executive director, Anna Roach, for, um, Atlanta Regional Commission was calling me up to, um, introduce a piece of, um, legislation that I'm leading on behalf of the region. And in her introduction, she wrapped it up by saying the loudest voice in metro Atlanta, Oz Nesbit. And I said, "On behalf of Rockdale County." You see, when we move throughout the region and across the country, we have to make sure that we're not there. I'm not there for Oz. My job is to represent the good people of Rockdale County and to champion those causes and make sure that we have a voice, whether we're speaking up on behalf of young people, senior citizens, transit, transportation throughout the community, understanding what arts, culture and entertainment is, how it equals up to economic development. You have to really know about the people's business in order to do the people's business. But if you're just going, sitting quietly, sitting passively, and you're not making a difference, why are you there? So we want to make sure that the people all across the region not know who I am, but who Rockdale County is. But it's because of the people that we represent in this justice that we make, we have to make sure we make some noise. I'm like, Congressman John Lewis, let's get into some good trouble. In order to make things happen, you have to sometimes rock the boat. And I like to, I'll turn the boat over, Claire Harris. You have to really do it if you're gonna make some waves and make things happen. So I encourage all of the people in Rockdale County to join me, to join us in getting in some good trouble. You got in good trouble this morning, give her a round of applause. All this excitement, we've got to push the envelope forward. I think we're on a sensitive time when, uh, with one of our presentations.
We are.
I'm gonna yield and we'll shift things a little bit. Executive Director, what's next up on board here?
All right, but it's so exciting because we are a good team, right? So if we could jump ahead to the agenda review portion, the contract item six oh three.
Okay.
And if we could call up Chief McDaniel to the podium.
Yes.
And I'll just briefly read out the contract while she makes her way up there.
Absolutely.
It would be item six oh three with KJ Bowers MD LLC through the Fire and Rescue Department for Dr. Karen Bowers to serve as the Medical Director for Fire and Rescue. It'll be four hu- forty-eight thousand dollars annually with one year with twelve-month unlimited auto renewals. Thank you, Chief McDaniel.
Woo, all this excitement, I'm excited for the growth of Rockdale County and you all should be equally excited that you have a fire department that's dedicated and committed to service delivery.
Yes.
That brings us to the role of the Medical Director. Uh, the Medical Director provides medical aspects of leadership, oversight, coordination, access to best practices to ensure that we have the best EMS service delivery. Dr. Karen Bowers is the new Medical Director for Rockdale County, Rockdale County Fire Rescue. Her qualifications are, and it's a lot, but a snippet of them are, she received her Doctor of Medicine twenty fifteen, a residency emergency medicine, Emory University School of Medicine, twenty fifteen to twenty eighteen, fellowship pre-hospital and disaster medicine, Indiana School of Medicine, twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. Uh, Dr. Bowers is board certified in emergency medicine and emergency medical services uh, by the Diplomate of the American Board. If I may just for a moment, the significance of that is emergency medicine, but emergency medical services, which speaks to the pre-hospital. It's what we do, the services that we provide, that's important. She's dedicated to just the in-house and what's gonna happen to them before they get there.
Wow.
Uh, she has medical director experience with Atlanta Fire Rescue Department, Jasper Fire Department and Clayton County Fire Department. Uh, so now I can go on, her resume is impressive, but I would like to bring her up. So if you would join me and welcome me, Dr. Karen Bowers.
Well, that was awkward. Well, that was awkward, I gotta put it down short, um, real short. My feet don't even touch the ground in these chairs. I'm super excited to be here. Um, it's very strange to have my name plastered up on the screen and all those things. Um, I, I'm really glad Chairman that you, uh, John Lewis is a personal hero of mine. I ran into him at Kroger one day, it was a big day for me.
She's gonna fit right in.
Um, I actually have his Good Trouble quote, uh, on a, on a placard outside of my front door. I regularly cause good trouble and maybe some other trouble, I don't really know. But, but one of the things that Chief McDaniel and I have talked about is that we really want to shake things up. It is time, it is time for, um, kind of some, some turnover and some change. It is time for that, not just here in Rockdale County, but for in EMS and pre-hospital medicine in general. The pandemic kind of ripped the Band-Aids off, off a lot of wounds that have been festering in medicine, emergency medicine and pre-hospital medicine specifically, um, for a very long time and accelerated kind of, um, tho- those all sort of coming to a head. What it's also done is provide us an opportunity to change and do new things, right? When you feel like things might be kind of working, nobody really wants to change things. And everybody wants to lead, but nobody wants to go first, right? Nobody wants to be that guy stepping out. Um, and so we've already taken the liberty of discussing some things that we want to do and expand in the, in the fire services, um, and some additional, um, service, service line items that we'd like to bring to the citizens that I think will really, um, improve our pre-hospital care and improve our patients' access to care. Because that's become a big issue in medicine in general, right, access to care. How many of y'all like your health insurance plan? Everybody got one? Cause I'll tell you, I bought insurance off the exchange until last year. And my patients used to be really surprised when I told them that I bought Obamacare because the hospital didn't give us insurance. Um, the people who were there are like, stop, literally stopping the bleeding, we don't get insurance. Right, so if anybody understands lack of access to emergency medicine and, um, and while that used to be somebody else's problem, it has very much become our problem and it's very much become a problem that we've taken kind of to the ground level and into people's homes, right, trying to address that. So, so we're working on some solutions that we're really excited to talk to you about coming up. That's not really the platform for this here, but, um, if you guys haven't noticed, I like to talk a lot about medicine and emergency medicine and I get really excited about it. So call me anytime, my phone's always on.
Give her a round of applause. So, Dr. Bowers, let me say, no, first of all, let me say, welcome to Rockdale County. We are also, yes, give her another round of applause. We are also super excited to have you. First of all, when I met you several weeks ago, the energy that you bring, and we can all see that energy. Uh, you certainly are a new, modern-day medical director. Uh, and it speaks to the new direction that we're going to here in Rockdale County. We understand that the significance of what, uh, Fire and Rescue does here in Rockdale County, we have to have, uh, a well-qualified and competent, uh, medical director. I, I want to yield and shift right now, commissioners, let's give a round of applause to Chief McDaniel. Chief McDaniel, we really do appreciate, let me say this word first, your patience. Uh, Chief McDaniel has led, uh, has championed the cause to make sure that we find and identify a medical director that not only has the chemistry to work with Rockdale County, but certainly has the credentials to make sure that we are bona fide, certified and we're ready to hit the ground running. She's committed to making sure that no patient, no citizen, nobody passing through shopping in Rockdale County is left on the side of the road. When our regular EMS services are too far to get there in time, we have the support. We have the expertise to make sure that we can respond in a timely manner to get the job done here in Rockdale. Chief McDaniel, we appreciate you, your leadership, uh, you have your team here with you, uh, Chief Webb, Ms. Harris, uh, uh, Chief Jordan, y'all stand up, let everybody, so give her a round of applause, absolutely, absolutely. This is a testament, commissioners, to what we just said about Director Kelly. No one gets anything done by themselves. It's through leadership like Chief McDaniel to the fact that we have the expertise that's a part of her team. And now we have a new medical director. Give her another round of applause, we'll see you soon, thank you so much. Welcome to Rockdale County. Wow.
I know.
I, I'm glad that you changed the whole agenda so we can get to that. We know the doctor has to go, but, uh, that's just commissioners' good information and a great job on behalf of Chief McDaniel and the Fire and Rescue, uh, Department here in Rockdale County. I mean, just good news, absolutely. Uh, now, I think it's time for us to really back in a little bit.
Yeah, we gotta back up.
We've got several other items of business to take care of.
Back to the real agenda review now, back from the top, so take it from the top, right? All right, so, um, the first item we have is under unfinished business, item five seventy-three. An ordinance to ma- to make and provide appropriations for the period beginning January first, twenty twenty-four and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. To make and provide such appropriations for the operations of the Rockdale County Government, its departments, boards and other agencies and funds, including all elected county officers and their employees, to provide for the control and administration of all funds of such agencies from all sources, to provide an effective date to repeal conflicting ordinances and resolutions and for other purposes, this will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday. And I will just keep going until someone says stop. Okay, so item five eighty-two is Office of Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention through the Juvenile Court. This is the Family Treatment Court Program. The amount is eight hundred ninety-five thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars. The match is twenty-five percent of grant amount in-kind salaries, that's approximately two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, and it's for three years. Item five eighty-three is with Truancy Intervention Projects, Georgia, through the Juvenile Court. This is for Truancy Intervention Project Grant. The amount is five thousand dollars with no match and it's through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Item five eighty-four is with Wendy Gres- Guastafaro PhD through the Juvenile Court. This is for Family Treatment Court Program Evaluation. It's change order number one to contract twenty twenty-one dash forty-six to extend the term and the amount is seven thousand dollars. The term is January first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and this is grant-funded. Item five eighty-five is with Monday.com through the Technology Services Department to provide per- to provide licenses for the Enterprise Plan. This is change order number two to contract twenty twenty-three dash ninety-two to add five more users. It's an additional one thousand five hundred twenty-one dollars and it's a one-year plan. Item five eighty-six is with Magnet Forensics through Technology Services Department for the Magnet Acxiom Forensic Software for Analysis on Computers and Cell Phones for E-Discovery. This is change order number one to contract twenty twenty-two dash two nineteen. The renewal amount is five thousand eight hundred dollars and it is for one year through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Item five eighty-seven is with Comcast Enterprise Service for the Technology Services Department for new monthly ENS circuit charge for the District Attorney's Grant Office. The amount is four hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-two cents per month for a total of twenty-five thousand, eight hundred fifty-five dollars and twenty cents for sixty months, and this is grant-funded. Item five eighty-eight is with Computer Software Incorporated through the Technology Services Department. This is a software services agreement, contract, this is change order number seven to contract twenty twenty dash thirty. It's to update, to move hosting infrastructure to the new cloud facility at no cost. Item five eighty-nine is with Superior Document Solutions through the Technology Services Department. This is for the Sourcewell Printer and Copier Contract from Multiple Departments. It's change order number one to contract twenty twenty-three dash one forty-two for an additional copier and printers and upgrades. The additional amount is one thousand two hundred forty-four dollars and sixty-four cents per month with a total of seventy-four thousand, six hundred seventy-eight dollars and forty cents for five years. Item five ninety is with the Georgia Emergency Management Agency Homeland Security through the Technology Services Department. This is a memorandum of understanding for Emergency Management Grant Manager System to allow full access to submit grants and this is at no cost. Item five ninety-one is with the Georgia Emergency Management Agency Homeland Security through the Technology Services Department. This is for the Federal IIJA State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program. The amount is sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars with a ten percent match of six thousand, six hundred, six hundred, I'm sorry, six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. The term is September- hundred and sixty-five dollars. The term is September 1st, 2022, through August 31st, Item 592 is with the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council through the Finance Department. This is for the Delegating Signing Authority for Signature Authorization Letter. Item 593 is with the Governor's Office of Planning and Budget through the Finance Department. This is for the Delegating Signing Authority Signature Authorization Letter. Item 594 is with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety through the Sheriff's Office. This is for Fiscal Year 2024 Heat Grant. The amount is sixty-three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars with a sixty percent match, with a total of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars. The term is October 1st, 2023, through September 30th, 2024. Item 595 is with Leeds Online through the Sheriff's Office for Power Plus Investigation System Service Package. The amount is forty-two thousand four hundred and eight dollars, and it's for three years, and it runs through August 31st, 2026. Item 596 is with Lisa Longton through the Superior Court Adult Resource Court for a part-time case manager, an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars per year, and it's through June 30th, 2024, with three twelve-month renewal options, and this is grant-funded. Item 597 is with All Pro Pest Services through the General Services Department. This is for pest control for county facilities, and it's a unit price contract in the amount of one thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars per month, with a total of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. This is for one year, with option to renew two additional one-year periods. Item 598 is with Lyman Davidson Dooley through the General Services Department. This is for architectural and engineering services on an as-needed basis. This is change order number one to contract 2021 dash fifty-L, and this is a name change only to LDDB Blue Line Incorporated. Item 599 is with the City of Conyers through the Transportation Department. This is a memorandum of understanding for the Sigmund Road Widening Phase Two. This is amendment number three to contract 2021 dash one fifty-six. This is on the terms of reimbursement from the city to the county, with city reimbursing eight hundred and eleven thousand sixteen Item 600 is with Georgia Power through the Transportation Department. This is for the installation of mounting lights on existing poles for the Sigmund Road Widening Project. The initial fee is twenty-six thousand dollars and a three hundred and sixty-eight dollar monthly utility charge. The initial fee is SLOSS-funded. Item 601 is with Lloyd Johnson through the Parks and Recreation Department. This is for an instructor for tennis lessons for youth and adults at Rockdale Tennis Center and Johnson Park. It's a seventy-thirty split. The amount is twelve thousand dollars. The term is January 9th, 2024, through December 31st, 2024, with two twelve-month period renewal options. Item 602 is with Georgia Recreation and Parks Association, GRPA, through the Parks and Recreation Department for the Atlanta Hawks Foundation Junior NBA Grant. The amount is two thousand three hundred eighty dollars. There is no match. The term is June 1st, 2024, through July 30th, 2024. We've already presented item 603. So item 604 is with Sterling Water Technologies through the Water Resources Department. This is for polyblend orthophosphate, and it's change order number two to contract 2021 dash two fifteen, to decrease in the unit price from one dollar and twelve cents per pound to um almost point ninety-eight percent per pound effective December 14th, 2023. It's an estimated yearly cost drop from two hundred and four thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars to a hundred and seventy-nine thousand two hundred thirty-three dollars and sixty cents.
That's what I call a drop there. Yeah, yeah, give that a round of applause.
Great savings.
Well, that one really caught my attention. I thought, what? You have a drop?
Yeah, that's dropping a lot of the vibe right there.
Glad they did the total annual cost because they lost me after two or three digits on this side of the decimal point. I'm like, okay, I don't know what that is.
Get the numbers right.
Right. Words over here. So, all right. Item 605 is a requisition through the General Services Department for Hazely Recreation. This is for site amenities for grill, table, and receptacle, and the amount is sixteen thousand two hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. It's a fifty percent grant and fifty percent SLOSS-funded.
And where are those going?
Uh, come on, let Director Hammer and uh tell us.
Good morning. The short answer is the DeCastro Nature Center that we're about to build. I could expand on it if you wish, but.
Well, tell, some folks don't know where that is. Go ahead and tell them where that is.
Okay. So the DeCastro Nature Center was a property Ramon Castro a few years back, probably a couple decades. It was donated to the county to be a park um forever and posterity. Uh, so we're developing it. It used to be a home. Uh, the home is, you know, very aged. Um, it was a typical home, and we're rehabilitating the the home into an outdoor pavilion and nature center. So we're keeping the old uh the uh the chimney that was there, the stone chimney. We're gonna take off some of the um old cedar shakes and reuse those and kind of rehabilitate those and and resource those into the new facility. So.
And where is this located?
This is located on the south side. Uh, and it's off of Daniel's Bridge Road, which is off of Union Church Road, which is off of East Fairview. So down on the south side, uh, about a mile from uh Panola Mountain Park.
Very good. And let me just say this, Director, before you leave, because, and I'm glad the commissioner asked about the actual location. Um, so this really is a part of history of Rockdale County. In the southern southern district of the county, um, this family donated this parcel of property to Rockdale. If you're not familiar with any you want more detail, I encourage you to get with Director Hammer or Director Redmond, and they'll give you more information about how to access uh this facility. And they're gonna keep us updated as to how this project is coming along. But this is a part of the southern history of Rock- of Rockdale County. I've been a resident here for twenty-three years. When I first got here, if you remember, um, there was a junkyard there on Highway 138 South as you prepare to go into Henry County on the right-hand side. Well, now, that is a beautiful park owned and operated by Rockdale County. This property is nestled in the center of that, coming from uh Daniel's Mill Road, and you have uh Highway 138 on the opposite side. And I think there's uh that is, what's the other road that's behind the Sonaco that goes to South Park?
East Fairview.
East Fairview. Thank you so much. So it's kind of tucked in there. It's a hidden gem. Um, but we're gonna make sure it's not hidden too long because we want to make sure that between Parks and Recreation and the efforts of Director Hammer and his division and his department, uh, that we'll make sure folks are knowing where it is. But it's a historical piece that we are really proud of in the county, and I'm glad that we were able to preserve pieces of this home, uh, as this was part of the wishes of the family a- as they made the donation. So thank you so much. Keep up, keep us, keep us posted on that. We'd love to get, you know, we're very visual and graphic folks here, so we'd love to get some pictures so we can see what you're talking about, Director.
We have a time lapse camera, so we'll see what we can do on that as well.
You've been rocking and rolling with them time lapses. Yes, sir. So we look forward to seeing it, putting it all together. Absolutely. Nothing like seeing how they put Humpty Dumpty back together again. That's what the time lapse does for us. It shows us how they pick up all the multiple pieces. All right, next item, please.
All right. Item 606 is a requisition through the General Services Department for Laz and Associates. This is for the proposal for installation and repair for Fleet Services roll-up garage door. The amount is twenty-seven thousand nine hundred seven dollars. This is host-funded.
Very good.
Item 607 is a requisition through the General Services Department for floor creations for the installation of ceiling and flooring at the DeCastro Nature Center. The amount is thirty-eight thousand dollars. It's a fifty percent grant and fifty percent SLOSS-funded. Item 608 is a requisition through the General Services Department, Fleet Division, for MHC Kenworth for engine overhaul and replacement of damaged parts, Engine 9. The amount is twenty-six thousand six hundred sixty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents.
I'm gonna keep drawing attention to this. Um, Chief uh or Chief Sanders or Chief McDaniel, do y'all know the the year model of Engine 9?
Twenty-eleven.
Twenty-eleven. Okay. There it is, right there. Uh, pay attention, commissioners. We just, it's twenty-six thousand dollars spent on a a a twenty-eleven uh this time, this particular time, as the chief points out. So it's important that we we're tracking this and paying attention to this. When we talk about infrastructure and utility and service delivery upgrade, we have to have a responsive equipment, apparatus, and vehicles to be able to respond to the need of the people and the citizens of Rockdale County from a public safety standpoint. But as stewards of the county, it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we are paying attention, that we're not investing too much money in a vehicle that's too old versus go ahead and then buy a new one. It's the same thing you can do if you go to the car dealership, uh, looking at a vehicle for yourself. But we have to have that high level of thinking from a corporate level, uh, as as commissioners here in the county. And I wanted to point that out because uh too many times that we're going down this list of upgrades and improvements, we don't really explain. We've not done all we should do to explain to the citizens what we're doing while we're doing. Twenty-six thousand dollars for twenty-eleven. That's something to keep a, I got an asterisk by it, and we're gonna be monitoring this as we move forward. Thank you.
Can we get a um comprehensive update on how much we've spent on that engine? Thank you.
Thank you. Good question, Commissioner Washington. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Item 609 is a requisition through the General Services Department for Laz and Associates for construction of DeCastro Nature Pavilion. The amount is ninety-four thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars. This is a fifty percent grant and fifty percent SLOSS-funded. Item, item 610 is a requisition through the General Services Department for floor creations for supply and install of LVP and Cove based in the R dot new break room and conference room. Hallways and offices are included. The amount is fifty-two thousand dollars. Item 611 is a requisition through the General Services Department for Mansfield Oil Company for unleaded and diesel fuel for 2024. Estimated amount is four hundred sixty-five thousand two hundred fifty dollars.
I want to pause there, Executive Director, for a second. Commissioners, just very briefly, I want to say thank you to all of our department directors, all of our elected officials, uh, the Sheriff's Office included, because they heard us loud and clear when we sent out the memorandum asking that you not idle a vehicle, just letting vehicles run and run and run and run. This is, uh, we had heard a lot of this from the citizens as well. There's been a significant change and drop, a big dip in the amount of money we're spending for fuel costs. And as y'all know, fuel has been high this year. Uh, so the county doesn't get a discount on fuel. But when we can encourage all of our utilities and our public safety personnel not to just sit and allow the vehicle to just run, 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 run. In the event that you can turn it off, turn it off. Now, let me clear this up. There are some incidents or some sometimes when the Sheriff's Office and the Fire Department cannot shut the vehicle down, depending on the nature of the call or what they're doing. But for someone just just sitting in a parking lot and just letting the car just run, 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 uh, while they run in and have lunch, we're not having that. So uh we've seen a significant difference on that, and I really do appreciate that. Wanted to say thank you to all of our department directors and all of our elected officials for getting the message out to their employees who drive uh county vehicles that we want them to shut those vehicles down, uh, when there's no need to just run them, uh, for no reason. So thank you because that's, that helps us, uh, becomes better stewards of the taxpayers' dollars.
Okay. Item 612 is a requisition through the General Services Department for James River Solution. This is for unleaded and diesel fuel. The 2024 estimated amount is one million five hundred fifty-two thousand and five hundred dollars. Item 613 is a requisition through the General Services Department for CXT for new four-pack restroom at Wheeler Park. The amount is one hundred seventy-six thousand eight hundred twenty-one dollars and forty cents. This is SLOSS-funded.
Uh, Director Hammer, what is a four-pack restroom?
And where are they going at Wheeler?
Right.
Four-pack.
I had a feeling that was gonna come up. We, we don't always control how our vendors label their own products, so sometimes we're at the mercy. It just means there are four toilets, four individual toilet stalls in there. I guess they call it a four-pack.
You broke it all the way down, man.
Three or a two-pack. Um, and I don't want to elaborate on that at all. So, um, and where it's going is that Wheeler Park, um, uh, if you remember, we presented the, uh, and I think Director Redmond presented the master plan for Wheeler Park with the skate park, splash pad, all the improvements. The, on that side of it, on Wheeler Park South, there's only one small restroom, and it has one, one toilet in it. And so we are relocating that one. It's a modular restroom. We're relocating that to the other side to be part of the trail system. And then in its place, we're gonna put one that has four toilet rooms that also have a water bottle, filler, water fountain, and a little showerhead on the side that'll serve both for the splash pad, uh, as well as for people going along the trail.
Four-pack.
Four-pack.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
It's fun, yes. It's fun to read these.
Yeah, we're getting educated meeting by meeting. I like it.
Maybe they just want to see if I'll say it. I see you over there. All right. Item 614 is a requisition through the Stormwater Department for Laz and Associates. This is for the Tatum Road Break Room and Restroom renovation. The amount is fifty-two thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars and sixty cents. Item 615 is a requisition through the Technology Services Department for Daisys Solutions, and this is a renewal for 2024. The amount is two hundred twenty-eight thousand one hundred twenty dollars. Item 616 is a requisition through the Transportation Department for Atlas. This is change order to complete additional right-of-way services for the Courtesy Parkway Project. The amount is eighty-five thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars, and this is SLOSS-funded. Item 617 is a requisition through the Sheriff's Office for GT Distributors for rifle, for rifle weapon lights. The amount is twenty-nine thousand six hundred eleven dollars and ninety-five cents. Item 618 is a requisition through the Parks and Recreation Department for the Atlanta Hawks for the 2023-2024 Junior Hawks Uniforms. The amount is fifteen thousand nine hundred thirty-three dollars. Item 619 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for Utilities Protection Center, doing business as Georgia 811. The annual membership fee for Georgia 811 for 2024, and that amount is nineteen thousand one hundred twenty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. Item 620 is a requisition through Fire and Rescue Department for Derek Crowley, doing business as Fire Safety Plus. This is for Fire Inspections Consulting Services for 2024. The amount is forty thousand three hundred twenty dollars. Item 621 is a requisition through the Fire Rescue Department for Target Solutions Learning, LLC, doing business as Vector Solutions. This is for the VRCFR Tracking Software Renewal. The amount is sixteen thousand six hundred seventy dollars and ninety-seven cents. Item 622 is a rec- is it expenditure request for the Auto-Matum Technologies for the Technology Services Department. This is for the annual escrow fee, maintenance, and VCS tax support for the Tax Commissioner's Office. The amount is thirty-one thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars. Item 623 is an expenditure request for the Metropolitan North Georgia through the Water Resources Department. This is for the 2024 dues. The amount is twenty-three thousand three hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents. Item 624 is an expenditure request through Coggedale Corporation for the Water Resources Department. This is for the Coggedale Maintenance and Support Renewal. The amount is one hundred thirty-seven thousand nine hundred thirteen dollars and fifty cents. Item 625 is a surplus of equipment request from the Sheriff's Office. And item 626 is a resolution for the Rockdale County Transit Development Plan. This will be submitted for ratification next Tuesday, and we just saw a presentation on it this Item 627 is a resolution authorizing the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners of Rockdale County to execute contracts with Enterprise Fleet Management. Item 628 is a resolution authorizing the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners of Rockdale County to execute contracts with Anthem, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Aetna, Aetna, and Aflac. Item 629 is an equal business opportunity policy. This policy is a follow-up from the presentation from last week. Also, item 630 is an ordinance amending Division III of Article Six of Chapter Two of the Code of Rockdale County, Georgia, providing authorization for an equal opportunity program for Rockdale County. This will be submitted for a first reading next Tuesday. Also a follow-up from the presentation last week. And item 631 is a text amendment case 2023 dash zero seven, in ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of Rockdale County, Georgia, specific- An ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of Rockdale County, Georgia, specifically Section ten point ninety-four of Chapter Ten, Article Two, Division Two, pertaining to off-premise sales of distilled spirits to provide for an adoption and effective date and to provide for other lawful purposes. This will be submitted for a first reading next Tuesday, but we also have the Director this morning here to do a brief presentation on this ordinance.
Okay, very good. Come on up, Director.
Want to make sure it's still the morning time. Good morning Commissioners, good morning Chairman.
Good morning.
Quick, quickly, I don't know if the presentation is up, is it ready to go?
It should be coming momentarily.
Shortly, all right. Per the request of the, uh, per the request of the, uh, Commission Board, what we did is that we looked at an analysis of the, uh, current package stores slash liquor stores that sell distilled liquor here in Rockdale County against, um, the sale of the same product in the City of Conyers. And looking at that, is the presentation up? Because I think the presentation covers the map. On the current map that the citizens are looking at, it clearly indicates in the blue the section areas where there are, uh, actual liquor stores here in Rockdale County. In the blue, there are six located south of I twenty. And then if you look at the City of Conyers, there are another five, uh, liquor stores within, uh, the City of Conyers with two starred with, uh, gold stars that have already been commissioned and will be coming online in twenty-twenty-four, totaling their amount to be seven. The current ordinance that we have for the sale of distilled, uh, liquor here in Rockdale County actually has some fleet requirements that we are requesting to be modified. This will ultimately double the feet of yardage here on our current ordinances, providing enough distance away from specific areas. Is the presentation ready?
No, they're working on that. Just keep going, dear.
Well, without the presentation, I'll just go through the major highlights if that's okay.
That's fine.
All right. As indicated in Section ten dash nine four, which is the distance requirements for our current ordinance regarding the sale of distilled liquor, liquor, not beer and wine, we currently have a distance requirement for the sale of these spirits about a hundred yards away from any county municipal areas, another hundred yards away from churches, synagogues, mosques, and other places of worship. What we requested is, and we also have about five hundred yards away from the sale of businesses and the consumption of businesses, the measured between the residential and off-preferenced consumptions. These distance requirements have ultimately created an opportunity for more saturation within the county. We are requesting today to double the distances, which will now separate and follow in line with the current, uh, municipal ordinance to move everything two hundred yards away from any school or education, um, institutions or college campuses, two hundred yards away, the, uh, the sale of these consumption items from any municipal areas, and it will be two hundred yards away from any churches, synagogues, mosques, or any places of worship. We are also requesting that this will also have a distance requirement, doubling the five hundred yardage away from any new or relocating businesses shall receive a licensing, a license to sell distilled spirits to off-premises consumption in such business areas within now a thousand feet.
Feet or yards?
I'm sorry, a thousand yards of any other business licenses to be sold or distilled spirits for off-premises consumptions as measured. What this would mean for our county is an opportunity for us to be able to use our limited economic spaces to have more diversity other than just package stores and liquor stores. This would open up the grounds areas for advanced economic development in line of what we're talking today because it will allow for, for fair spacing to be utilized for other things. I want to highlight that this does not mean, and I want to be specific about this part. These changes will double the distance requirements for the sale of distilled spirits throughout Rockdale County. These changes do not affect the sale of beer and wine. These sales do not affect the sale of liquor in restaurants and other establishments. These changes affect new or relocating pa, locating packaged and liquor stores. These changes limit the saturation of packaged stores throughout the county. These changes also provide for more economic opportunities for diversity within the county's limited retail spaces. Those will be the specific impacts, uh, for the request of this first reading as the Commissioners are reviewing the ordinances, and this is what would happen moving forward if and when approved.
Commissioner, I'll start with Commissioner Washington. Uh, this has been a hot community topic, so Commissioner, any comments?
Um, well, I'm very, very excited that this is here. Um, we've been talking about this for a long time and, um, from what I understand, it has unanimous support from us because we hear you all, we heard, do all, we see, and we definitely want our community to be, um, supportive of people who like to live aid, but also understanding that we are more than liquor stores. We want more diverse opportunities. And so now people have to, I, I think, from what I understand, this almost eliminates the opportunity for other liquor stores to come into this community. So I'm very proud of this, um, ordinance and I'm glad to support it.
Commissioner Williams.
I don't really have any comments.
Okay, well, I do, and I want to say thank you to the leadership of Director Njoko and her team. Um, I also want to say thank you to all of our citizens who spoke very openly about this. There's a lot of confusion in our small community, uh, between what's in the city limits and what's in the unincorporated area of Rockdale County. Oftentimes, as people are moving throughout the community, they, um, couple both of us together in terms of what's in the city, what's in the county. And sometimes it can be quite difficult to distinguish, uh, the boundaries line, lines between the city limits and Rockdale County limits as well. But what the Director has done this morning, she has taken the time to clearly outline, uh, what's, uh, not to come, uh, what will be, uh, remaining, and what it will not affect, or, uh, impact, should I say, in terms of, um, of establishments that are selling. But anybody who is selling, uh, bottles that you can take distilled liquor home and enjoy, anybody coming in new, they're going to have to abide by these new guidelines that we've set forth. Uh, as another education piece, and certainly not to confuse our residents, there is a difference between the City of Conyers and Rockdale County and the unincorporated area. Oftentimes, people call me all the time saying, what you putting up there on, on one thirty-eight? And I, first of all, we, I, the Rockdale County is not putting up anything, okay? A large portion of Highway one thirty-eight, guess what? It's located in the City of Conyers. And this is not throwing any shade on the city, but we don't govern what they do and regulate what they do over there. Uh, we do communicate and we do have, uh, uh, collaboration in terms of how our community grows as a whole, but they have a mayor and a city council and they make decisions, and they have their own planning and development department as well. So, uh, we always have to take advantage of this opportunity to educate and inform the citizens so they'll be able to understand the difference. Mainly because we have a government access channel, Channel twenty-three, a podium, and a camera. Everything just about comes to Rockdale County Board of Commissioners because they think that we are in charge of everything. They don't distinguish that there are three, three government entities in this community. Who are they? I'm glad you asked. Rockdale County, the City of Conyers, and the Rockdale County Public School System. Oftentimes, and I meant, made, meant to make mention of this earlier when Deputy Director Solomon was talking about transportation, they are still receiving calls in the Rockdale Department of Transportation regarding school buses because people get confused. They think that, just like our, uh, Department of Talent Management, Rockdale Department of Talent Management gives calls for people, and some of those folks actually work for the school system. They call our HR department. I'm like, that's quite, kind of confusing and a little bit embarrassing, too, that you don't even know who your HR folks are. But because the county is so present, we're so present, we're so involved, and we have this media outlet with Channel twenty-three, everybody brings everything here and they think that we just cover it all. This lines up to what we're doing this morning, what we've been talking about. The running theme in this meeting is economic development. Director Njoko, thank you for the information, the education, but thank you for hearing from the board as well as the citizens of Rockdale County, uh, as we move forward. I don't think there could have been a better time of year to talk about regulating, uh, spirits than during this holiday season. Uh, we embrace and we support economic development. Don't mean, I don't want to get it wrong, but I want to say that we, uh, enough is enough, and, uh, what citizens don't want to see, not only they don't want to see so many mattress outlets, they don't want to see liquor stores everywhere, uh, either. So I just wanted to point that out. Give the Director a hand for a great job. She and her team, uh, once again led this effort. Thank you. And, and I say thank you to my colleague, Commissioner Washington Williams, because, um, we heard from the citizens and because of that, this legislation is moving forward. Thank you so much.
Can, can we go back to, um, six twenty-nine, the equal business opportunity?
Yes, thank you.
So, um, when we talked about it last, whenever we were here last, um, I asked that the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars be reduced to a hundred thousand dollars, and it's still two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this ordinance. I know I talked to the Finance Director, um, yesterday, and she was talking to you all. I just want to see where we are because that's going to, um, impact my decisions, whether it's two hundred and fifty thousand or a hundred thousand.
And so the CFO is out today, but, um, she talked to all of the Commissioners and, um, everyone is on board with a hundred thousand, so the county attorney just needs to edit that. It'll be changed before the next meeting.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
And Commissioner Washington, thank you for that. I want you to know that we are in full support of it. I think this is a big first for Rockdale County, this whole equal business opportunity, EBO, and I think we will have, the first year or so will give us a gauge to see what type of interest and participation coming from vendors and, uh, uh, entrepreneurs or business owners, vendors in the community to tag on to the opportunities that we have for contracts here in Rockdale County. Maybe in about a year, we'll go in a different direction, but I think this is a great start.
Right, absolutely.
This can be tweaked. Uh, there's no need to get caught up there. The biggest thing was that creating an equal business opportunity for vendors who want to do business with Rockdale County. And the, the exciting thing is we've never had, uh, a big opportunity like we have the one in front of us with this, uh, government complex that's coming on board. So it is creating some opportunities. And we hope, we really hope that many local business people, uh, would take advantage of this. And I've said to all of the folks involved to make sure that we advertise, advertise, make sure people know about it, know about it, and, and that they can, um, have the credentials and eligibility to get on board to do what needs to be done in a legal kind of way and make sure they're ready when they step into our offices for procurement.
Outside of that, though, when speaking with, um, our Finance Director, this policy enables all of our contracts that are a hundred thousand dollars or more to have that opportunity, and that's what's more important, what, just as important. So that's everything from water to transportation to, um, a- anything that we're doing. So that's why, to me, it was, it's very important that we have, um, the hundred thousand dollar threshold so as many people that can provide that cert, level of service can, um, benefit from this policy.
Well, I'm glad you decided to go back to that item, uh, item six twenty-nine, Commissioner, because you're right. It gives access, and that's what this is all about. This whole EBO, uh, policy is about granting access to those who want to do business. And we're saying, we're giving you access, but we're also saying, come ready and come prepared. Make sure you have your stuff in order.
Absolutely.
All right.
Okay, item six thirty-two is a resolution authorizing approval of alcoholic beverage licenses. And item six thirty-three are amendments to the Employee Pay and Classification Plan through Talent Management Department. And, um, now we're down to public comment.
So, um, as far as six thirty-three, I think for the public's information, we probably ought to explain what that is.
Six thirty-three, okay, thank you.
Executive Director Holmes taking the podium.
Executive Director Holmes, okay.
Awesome. Good afternoon, Chairman, Madam Commissioners. Item number six thirty-three is the appro, is our proposed amendments to our employee pay and classification plan. On an annual basis, we do review that with all of our department heads. We meet with all of our elected officials. Um, the amendments include reclassifications as well as updates to existing job descriptions. In addition to that annual review, um, this proposal also includes the addition of seven new positions, specifically under emergency management, and those seven new positions are with animal services. The animal service positions are in line with the strategic initiatives that were previously approved by this board, and this falls in line with it. I do want to bring up Director Morgan, and he can speak a little bit more about the seven positions as it pertains to public safety.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Director Morgan.
Chairman Commissioners, good afternoon again. Um, this is an important step for animal services who is a part of our public safety overall umbrella that to address, this will help us efficiently and effectively address a wider scope of being able to respond when an officer or citizen has an aggressive dog after hours. Instead of having to call in somebody to travel in, this, these extra people or these new people will allow us to have essentially a night shift, essentially that will be able to respond because that's what ties up our public safety time, is when they're having to wait on us to respond. And the officers, they're sort of trapped by the call, and so if we can respond quicker, it frees up law enforcement and fire to be able to go out and do other calls and we handle the animal. It also adds a layer of protection to our citizens and our public responders to get those animals off the streets as quickly as possible.
Well, let me tell you, Director Morgan, this is definitely a step in the right direction. Chief Sanders and I met with Sheriff Levitt and his executive staff, uh, about a month ago on this very subject. Um, the, the Sheriff's Office, just like so many other law enforcement agencies across our region, are really strapped with, uh, low personnel, uh, not having enough, uh, law enforcement officers or deputies out in the street to respond to the number of calls that they're receiving. When a deputy gets tied up for hours dealing with, uh, an aggressive animal and they have to wait at the scene, uh, until a, uh, animal control officer puts on his or her clothes, get in the truck, drive to the scene, all of that is time, it, it really shuts down law enforcement and public safety for an extended period of time that is really unnecessary. The Sheriff's Office worked with our leadership team, Director Morgan and Chief Sanders, to make sure we come up with a plan that would work in the county. Um, the last thing we need is to have a deputy sitting on a call babysitting a, a dog or aggressive animal when we have so many calls, uh, that they're needing to respond to. And these are some of the things behind the scenes that a citizen just won't know that's happening out there. And there's a need for this. I like the way the Director described it. This is a part of our public safety umbrella. Absolutely. Unless you've been a part of running a county government and running an organization like this, you have no clue of the different nuances that, that are happening and the things that you have to really consider to make things work. Number one, make it safe for the citizens and make it safe for our personnel. Absolutely. You think about a deputy. A deputy don't want to have to encounter an aggressive dog. And what will happen if the deputy have to take some type of lethal action on that aggressive dog? It'll be CNN headline news from here to Europe for that happening. So we have to think in a global way, uh, from a leadership standpoint. I, I, you know, listen, the community is growing. The needs for services are growing. And in order for us to provide the level of quality service delivery to our citizens, we've got to meet and match those needs. We can't think like nineteen seventy-five. We're on the brink of twenty twenty-four, people, and I'm hearing the Sheriff's Office, uh, they're calling pending or taking calls by way of phone now and that kind of thing. Uh, they have so many vacancies. Uh, they have so many vacancies over there, they can't attract enough people to hire to be able to fill the vacancies. Last thing the sheriff need is for a deputy to be tied up babysitting the dog. So let's give the resources that makes sense to manage the county. Thank you for your leadership, Director Morgan. Thank you for working with, uh, Sheriff Levitt. Thank you, Chief Sanders, for your corporate leadership in terms of making sure that we were able to, uh, iron out all of the wrinkles and work collectively. I like the collaboration between our office and the sheriff's office. And thank you Sheriff Levitt for, uh, bringing this to our attention and we're coming to a resolution. Uh, the sheriff was busy this morning. They had a sensitive situation out in the community, uh, to handle. He texted me this morning and made me aware of it. That's why he wasn't here, but I'm telling you, I know the sheriff is super excited about this because this gives him more um factor so that his people can respond to the needs of the citizens. Director Morgan, uh, I'd be remiss if I don't mention our manager, C.G. Baker. All of you all know that C.G. does a fantastic job running our animal services, uh, shelter in his facility. Uh, so we want to say thank you for him and his leadership. He was the one that really put the nuts and the bolts together to devise a plan that was reviewed by Chief Sanders and Director Morgan. Let's give it up for Director Morgan and Animal Services.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
So after hearing that, um, I'm wondering the need for seven employees versus three or four.
Of these seven, five will be field officers and two will be in the kennel. Since we've expanded the kennel and since we've come out of COVID, our annual, our daily intake is up about forty percent. Three years ago, I had thirty-five animals. Today we're running an average of about fifty-five and we have space for fifty-four. So we have more stuff to do in the kennels, but the big part of this is to have a night crew to put one or two trucks up every evening, five to seven days a week. You have to have enough people to staff that, which is normally between four and five because at night for safety reasons, we will put two in a vehicle instead of one because they're out there in the dark and maybe by themselves. So that's sort of a minimum number, but that's a good number to start with on that to give us the resources we need to respond to local law enforcement and citizens after five, before midnight type thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Sanders?
I did want to point out that, um, although we're talking about, the meeting was with the sheriff, we also provide animal services to the city of Conyers. They don't have their own animal services, so this will also benefit them as well.
And they have the same concerns.
Very good. So, Chief, thank you. That's a very important, uh, point to make, right? That, that also backs up the question and concern coming from Commissioner Williams. Not only are they servicing the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office, but they're servicing the city of Conyers Police Department as well. So those calls are coming from so many different, thank you for that. That was very, I, I do have one other question I'm going to ask Director Morgan to come back up because sometimes I get it twisted or get it wrong. I want to make sure I get it right. What is the name of the big organization that, uh, governs over, uh, uh, dogs? Is PETA, Pete, what's the, what's the, there's a?
There's a number that are nationwide. PETA is the, is the animal advocacy.
Yes.
You have the, um, oh, my mind's going blank. It's the National?
Association of?
It's?
AC something. Yeah, but really, PETA, PETA was the one I was really talking about.
PETA is known for safety of the animals.
Right, and let me stay there for a moment. PETA is the group that I'm really talking about because they stand ready with a, a, a long list of attorneys that move very fast to be able to advocate on behalf of any wrongdoing or, uh, cruelty to animal cases and any mistreatment of animals in any kind of way. Uh, there's been several, uh, you can check me on this. There's been several incidents across the country where law enforcement officers have had to take down an animal for safety purposes right there in the heat of the moment. And the moment that happens, this organization dunks in people right away and they make a big, big deal. I'm not going to say anything negative. I don't want them out here broadcasting and protesting that, we get enough of that as it is. So I do want to talk about this movement in the right direction to separate law enforcement from animal control in terms of the need to service the community. It's important that that comes out.
And that goes right. It, it still goes hand in hand with what we promised and what we committed to do with the, um, master plan. This just puts it all in, um,
Perspective.
Perspective and it, and it enhances what is our commitment to animal services.
And there's nothing in this seven that is not in the plan.
Enough said. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Executive Director Holmes, absolutely. Uh, before we move, uh, into, I'm going to call up, uh, Director Simpkins from our stormwater department. He's going to give us some general update on some of the things that they're working on. Uh, I've asked him to provide us with some information. Director Simpkins, good, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Madam Commissioners. Uh, all is well in stormwater management. Uh, we have a lot of moving parts going on to date. Uh, I'll start off with one of our biggest accomplishments, I, I would say, is in dealing with the forty years of neglect here in Rockdale County in regards to infrastructure. We're on schedule to have a hundred and fifty jobs completed by our in-house crews, uh, by the end of the year, which I think is a big accomplishment considering the amount of work that we have. Uh, we're on track to have sixty contractors, contractor projects completed. We have our on-call contractors to come in and deal with construction jobs that, you know, are probably a, a little bit larger in nature or more, more difficult, uh, in nature. So we have our on-call contractor to come in and we're on schedule to have sixty of those projects completed by the end of the year.
So that's a hundred and two, a total of two ten?
So that's a total of a little over two hundred, two hundred and ten projects total.
Wow.
Absolutely.
You know, um, another thing too, our pond maintenance. I've talked in previous meetings about our detention ponds and getting our ponds, um, compliant and, and cleaned. Uh, and we have our pond maintenance contractor on the ground and working. Um, to date, they've probably done about five or six ponds. Uh, one of the most recent ones though was the pond out at the War of Heroes, uh, over at Black Show's Park. That pond, you know, was, was quite overgrown and we got them over there yesterday to start on that pond and get that one cleaned out. And I know with the, the amount of traffic and people over there to visit that, that War of Heroes area, that's going to be a really good look for them to see that, that pond is being maintained. On top of that, we've also been working to finalize our request for quotes for our H and H, uh, study and asset inventory. And in layman's terms,
Yes, sir.
Layman's terms, what that is, is basically all of the stormwater infrastructure here in Rockdale County has not been cataloged or inventoried in a number of years. So in order to properly plan, to maintain, to properly plan on putting in new infrastructure to handle stormwater management, we have to know where these structures are, you know, at what elevation they are, what type of structures they are, whether they are pipe conveyances, open ditches, um, drain, drainage inlet, catch basins, that type of thing. So that is going to be a very detailed inventory and hydrologic and hydraulic study that we're going to be, um, embarking upon first quarter twenty twenty-four to get that going. Uh, that is going to be a major accomplishment in us kind of planning out the future for stormwater management in Rockdale County. Um, I'll close with, with one other, uh, thing. We've also been working to update the impervious surfaces on properties here in Rockdale County. So in regards to billing stormwater utility, sending stormwater utility bills out, we want to bring a system of fairness and equity to that. Prime example, you may have a citizen that's living in a ten thousand square foot home and a citizen that's living in a two thousand square foot home. As of right now for residential, they are paying the exact same amount.
What?
They are paying the exact same amount just based on the way the stormwater utility billing is set up. We are going to be moving, uh, in the future to a system that is going to provide more equity and we'll be basing the billing off of impervious surface.
How soon are we going to be doing that?
Uh, we're, we're looking to, we're, we're finding out.
Hurry up, get it done. Yeah, I mean, you got me, you just choked me, uh, you done brought out another whole side of me just from what you just said. I could see Commissioners, that example, uh, that the director gave. I mean, that is certainly, uh, an equity issue there, but, but I'm going to yield and go back. Uh, I'll digress. Talk to me more, tell us what, what you got coming in that space.
Okay, so yeah, so in that space, basically, um, impervious surface, let me just quickly break down impervious surface. You have pervious surfaces which, when rain hits, say a grassy field, uh, pervious surfaces like that, the water is able to infiltrate into the ground. With impervious surface, concrete, your asphalt, you know, parking lots, different things like that, that water is not able to infiltrate and it needs to be managed.
That's right.
It needs to be managed. So, like I said, in dealing with that, we just want to bring equity to it so that everybody is paying their fair share, so.
Do you have a deadline or when we can anticipate hearing back from you regarding this equity, uh, balance that you're talking about?
Right, well, we, you can expect to hear back from me. I'll come back and update your first quarter of twenty twenty-four. Uh, we'll, we'll definitely have some more movement on that twenty twenty-four.
That's one of the ones we'd like you to step it up on because I think in the world of all of what we've been talking about today, economic development and fair play, uh, the, the example that you gave is a big contrast.
Right, all right, so I'll, I'll, I'll end there in a nutshell.
I, I do have a question, uh, that I think is a general question. I think there's still a lot of misunderstanding about why stormwater. Why stormwater, Director? Why, why is there a need for stormwater in Rockdale County? For stormwater management?
Stormwater management directly impacts people's quality of life in regards to them traveling from their home to work to businesses. A lot of times when things are out of sight, they're out of mind. So people traveling across the roadways, they'll see the bridges, you know, they'll see the big concrete bridges, but they fail to realize that they travel over a complex system of culverts and stream crossings every day during their commute back and forth to home and work. Stormwater management, prevention of flooding, you know, these things directly impact citizens' quality of life here in Rockdale.
Well, I appreciate you sharing that and giving that piece of education because that, that is important. For a long time, a lot of folks were not educated or they were uninformed and they simply thought that stormwater was simply rainwater. And they didn't see the need to manage it. Uh, I often talk about Commissioners, the fact that, uh, in twenty seventeen, we pulled the stormwater division from underneath the planning and development department and we created its own department, stormwater management, and provided funding so that we can manage and mitigate some of these problems, uh, that we've seen across the region and right here in Rockdale County. As the director has so eloquently educated and explained, explained to us that we have to have these types of, uh, uh, waterway management systems so that we can keep the community from flooding, we can, uh, avoid. So even when we think about planning and development and, and giving those codes for new development, you can't do that without consulting our stormwater management department to make sure that where you're building should be done. There are countless numbers of residents, let me start there, in Rockdale County that I've gone out to so many situations and incidents where I've wondered, how did they get permits? To be able to build these homes in these flooded plains, right in the heart of storm? And, and I, I, I couldn't, well, so, so it's interesting. Forty-plus years of neglect. Uh, I am really pleased of the work that we've been doing, this board, and authorizing our stormwater management department, uh, to move forward since twenty seventeen. Uh, we've made some improvements, we've made some strides, we've got a lot of work ahead of us. Um, they don't have a big army of folks out there, um, but we've increased the size of the team. We've got personnel and equipment and we have to make sure that we're staying on the cutting edge as we move with technology to get the job done. Director Simpkins?
And I'd like to add one more thing in closing. And talking about stormwater utility billing and equity, we've also been working very closely with our commercial community.
Okay.
You know, in regards to stormwater utilities, you're going to have residents being billed, but you'll also have commercial businesses being billed. Uh, we have been in the process of working with a lot of, of the commercial businesses to update their stormwater utility billing procedures also. Now, I will say that because of the amount of time that has passed, you know, over the years, people have gotten used to their stormwater utility bill being one, one certain amount and that's what they're used to. But then when we're going back and we're updating these impervious surfaces, people, you know, adding on or enlarging parking lots at their commu- commercials, businesses, these numbers are going to change and they do change. And so, you know, the majority of citizens have been, you know, pretty excited and, and cooperative, you know, with us updating this process. So it's a working process, but, you know, it's for the good of the community.
You, you guys are doing a great job, Director Simpkins. Keep us posted, keep us updated and continue to be patient and work with our community on behalf of this board, educating and informing the citizens. Sometimes it's all about slowing down and taking a moment to explain to people the who, what, when, where, how, why, and the cost. Uh, and to, uh, explain to them that we've gone all these years and we didn't have a stormwater management, uh, department. And now that we do, we got, we're trying to play catch up. And we're going to be playing catch up for a number of years, absolutely. Thank you so much. Let's give them a round of applause. Great job. Okay, we, we're going to move right along here. We're going to go right into, um, what, what, wait a minute. I, I, I tell you what, I'm getting ahead of myself. I've, I've got a couple of, um, I want to, let me start. Director, uh, Redmond, come on up. I want to, I, I've asked Commissioners, we talked earlier this year about the importance of the arts community, arts, culture and entertainment. And Director Redmond and I, uh, made a trip earlier mid-year, uh, to see what they're doing in some other regions. He's been working with his team diligently to, to keep us posted. Director Redmond, let's talk about arts, culture and entertainment. Tell us where we are. You all have done a lot of things in-house this year, uh, in that space, but talk to us.
Yes, sir, Chairman. Good afternoon, Chairman, Madam Commissioners. Uh, PR has a short video that they'll play really quick.
All righty then.
Some more nice music for you, Chairman.
All right.
So, to your point, uh, yes, Chairman, we have, uh, over the, the, the year of twenty twenty-three, we've, I've come before the board and the, the, the meetings and say we're having this event or
Pull your mic up.
This activity is coming up. So, uh, today I wanted to just really, um, focus on the body of work that has been done for twenty twenty-three and just give a complete snapshot of what we've done, uh, in the area of cultural arts and entertainment. So we provided over sixty cultural events in twenty twenty-three. From the perspective of a business owner, we provided over sixty local vendors with the opportunity to participate in our events. This has provided them with positive economic impact for them and their businesses. From the perspective of the citizen, we've had an average of two thousand patrons at our large scale events. This, uh, covered the East Ed Client, Back to School Drive, Halloween Fest, Summer Concert Series, Beach Opening and Autumn Festival. That's just to name a few. For the smaller events, we had an average of two hundred patrons, uh, attend events such as the Sunset Cinema, Friday Wine Down, the Sunday Brunch in the Park. We've also collaborated with several community stakeholders such as Walmart Health, Mercy Heart, Rockdale Piedmont Hospital, American Red Cross, AmeriGroup, Rockdale Emergency Relief, Rockdale County Fire Rescue, Rockdale County Sheriff's Office, Rockdale Water Resources and the Grady Jarrett, Grady Gears Foundation. Um, so
Wow.
We've had an opportunity to really impact the community, not only just from a standpoint of having events and getting the public out, but just collaborating with the different stakeholders and inviting the local business owners out to participate and get their businesses out on Front Street and, uh, have them to increase their, their services as well.
You talked to me earlier, just a couple of weeks ago, about bringing some of our, of our arts, culture and entertainment more mainstream Conyers and Rockdale. Uh, what can we expect next year, particularly with the Summer Concert Series being more central? Talk to us about that.
Yes, we, we talked about the Summer Concert Series being more central, having Yes, we, we talked about the Summer Concert Series being more central, having it at Wheeler Park. Uh, especially with all the amenities, as Director Hammett got up early and talked about some of the things that's coming with the restroom and everything. That's all in preparation of us anticipating moving the events to a central location. The parking lot is, is larger, this, uh, four, four-lane road, so we won't have to run into some of the obstacles we face with having, um, the Sheriff's Office directing traffic in such a, a heavy force. Um, it just allows for us to have more of an open area, uh, more of a, uh, family-centered areas as well. I mean, you can think about, you can come sit down and watch a concert while your child is playing behind you in the splash pad or playing volleyball or under the pavilion having a picnic. So, we just want to make sure that we are able to grasp, grasp the, uh, entire concept, uh, family concept and bring everything together in one local place.
Director, I like it. Commissioners, when he talked about that, when he, Director Redman shared his vision uh, for bringing particularly the Summer Concert Series to a centralized location like Parker Road, uh, two things came to mind. Number one, safety. Uh, we, there's a big challenge on Highway one thirty-eight north trying to get in and out of Costly Mill. We love Costly Mill, but let's, let's be real about the traffic. And he talked about traffic management, uh, with the Sheriff's Office on a major state route. That is very difficult, even if you have a blue light. Bringing it into Parker Road allows us to have more traffic control and manage it. It creates a more safer environment.
Yes.
The second thing I thought about was what we've been talking about all day long, economic development. When you think about people coming out to an event like that and then all of the restaurants and other amenities in that area they can go out to, you're lending yourself. Commissioner Williams, I remember your conversation about the impact of arts in our community. It does directly impact economic development. So this is forward-thinking. Thank you, thank you for this. Uh, we've talked about Commissioner Washington and Arts, Culture, and Entertainment Division of the Parks and Recreation Department. I think as the director continues to wrap up some of what he's doing, we'll have a better gauge on what that looks like as we move into two thousand and twenty-four. You had any other thoughts regarding that piece?
Oh, no, you know, I'm one thousand percent on board with the creation of arts, culture, and entertainment, especially as a division. I just, with the Summer Concert Series, I just hope Ms. Bean is still very much involved because she does such an outstanding job with everything that she does over there.
Yes, I think that was a clear directive, kinda on the side.
Yes, it was.
Keep Ms. Bean in the loop, she said. Commissioner Williams, any more comments on arts, culture, and entertainment?
Well, I think anytime we can expand our audience, whether it's the location or the type of event, um, it, it, you know, it, it just brings another reason for people to want to live in Rockdale County. Absolutely.
Yes.
And, and we know, you know, as I have perused through the, um, attendees at the Summer Concert Series, we have a number of people coming from other communities, other counties.
I've spoken to some of them, you're right.
Mm-hmm. And so, you know, moving it to Wheeler Park, like you said, with availability of restaurants and such nearby, that's gonna bring in those host dollars, those splash dollars, um, that people from other counties are paying for us, and, and we're not doing that. Um, my only, my biggest concern is shade. Whoops. Is, is having enough shade. There's lots of shade at Costly Mill. Um, so we, you know, I don't know if we wanna invest in some large umbrellas or, or what, but, um,
We just all sit under the chairman's tent. I said, we'll all sit under the chairman's tent.
Yes. Um, but the heat can be pretty intensive sometimes at those summer.
And we try to start events later as the sun's going down. For that, we keep that in mind. We also try to do a cooling tent as well. I don't know if you guys remember seeing that.
Yeah, and I like the fact that fire rescue, they're there, and, and they're, they're, they're already staged on site. We don't have to wait in the event of something happening, but I hear the point that the commissioner is making. I, I, you know, they do now make the fancy lawn chairs that have the little
They do.
cover on it. If you want one of those bougie Commissioner Washington-type lawn chairs, they have those. Uh, if you want one of those, they have those. Uh, but to his point, really, he schedules it and sets the time during the part of the evening on Sunday where the sun is nearing, uh, the end of the day and it works out.
So are you saying we're gonna, they're gonna start later than they have been?
No, we'll, we'll, we'll start at the same time. Uh, we may encourage, uh, patrons right before the concerts start to be able to have like an umbrella, but once it starts to lorig, out of the respect of people behind you. So we just, we've had conversations about things like that to make sure that everybody's able to see and enjoy the concert while they're out there. So, yes, ma'am.
And, and did you hear what the director, you see the kind of vision, I, I gotta highlight that. Did you hear what he just said? Thinking ahead, this is the space this man masters. Uh, the point about having the shade of the umbrellas, but the fact of putting the umbrella, then we're gonna get all these complaints. I can't see the stage. So it's all of those different dynamics.
Yes.
That's what I talk about. That's what I mean when I talk about no one gets anything done by themselves. You have to have talent. Just don't give it up for Director Redman. That's what I'm talking about. Absolutely. Always two or three steps ahead.
Chairman, Commissioners, our final event this year will be the Grady Jarrett Giveaway. So our flyer coming up. And as that flyer is being pulled up, I know I stood in front of you probably about a year ago and I told you that a parent made a comment to me saying, there's nothing to do in Rockdale but Chuck E. Cheese. And I told you I took that personally. And I did take that personally. And so, uh, I get a lot of feedback. I get calls, my phone rings on Thanksgiving about five times. They don't care. I get calls and, and I get feedback, and as, uh, Director Holmes say, feedback is a gift. So, um, one, one piece of important feedback I got this year was from, uh, from a resident that's been here for twenty years, and she said to me, this is the most we've ever had to do. So, the old notion of there's nothing to do is, is, is gone, and there are things to do as it relates to, uh, cultural arts and entertainment.
That's a testament to you and your leadership and your staff. Give them a round of applause. Absolutely. Yes.
So I just want to highlight this last event that we have for two thousand and twenty-three. It's the Grady Jarrett and the Grady Gears Foundation's toy giveaway. It would be at the Grady Jarrett Teen Center located at Johnson Park Recreation Center, Saturday, December ninth, uh, from two P M. to six P M. Yes, Mr. Jarrett will be there. And I gotta say, I gotta highlight Grady. He's a stand-up guy.
Yes.
A couple of weeks ago, I went to go participate in his, uh, Feed the Homeless initiative. And, um, you know, he just tore his ACL. I'm not sure if you knew that.
Yep.
And he came in there on crutches and he stayed the entire event. So he's, he will be here our Saturday, and he's, uh, a, a big advocate for giving back to the community. So.
Well, Grady Jarrett is our hometown native son and our hometown hero, and at least he's one of them. We have several people who are shining stars of Rockdale County, but Grady Jarrett, a graduate of Rockdale County High School, uh, number ninety-seven with the Atlanta Falcons, he doesn't forget Rockdale County.
No, he does not.
This Grady Gears Foundation speaks to that, and I think, uh, you're gonna see on the ninth of December how he gives back to this community. Uh, and even knowing, I, yes, I saw the big news about his ACL, but this is a big deal. Thank you to, uh, Grady Jarrett, number ninety-seven, our hometown hero, his mom, Ms. Alicia Jarrett, and their whole team.
Yes.
Uh, we're proud of him and the work that he's doing with the Atlanta Falcons. And certainly proud of the foundation, uh, him giving back to the community. He, so sometimes these people forget where they come from. Uh, this man has not forgotten, and we certainly do appreciate that.
So this event will impact over five hundred kids. Um, ask me, how do I know that? Because we have over five hundred registered.
Give them a round of applause. Thank you. Alright, come on up, Director Memes. You've got some information that you wanna share with us and you wanna lead us into a couple of one of your videos or, or talk about something. My phone just died, but let's go.
I was saying I was hungry. Um, so we're so excited. We've been talking about partnership and community and collaboration. I wanna thank General Services for the wonderful Christmas decorations. Um, yes.
Yes. Got Old Town looking good.
We got Old Town looking good, and, um, Director Redman talked about the giving. It's been a great season of giving all year long, the fans, the turkey, the toys. But at the Christmas tree lighting, please get ready to cue the video, at the Christmas tree lighting, we had some wonderful partnerships. So we do wanna thank our premier sponsor, um, sponsor, House of Fire Impact, um, Center. They donated not one, not two, not five, but ten
Ten.
ten bikes at the Christmas tree lighting.
Yes, thank you.
Yes. And we had wonderful entertainment from the, um, C J Hicks Chorus and dance from the Key of Dance Community. So this time we would like to play the video for that.
Good evening. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Hello, 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 to the two thousand and twenty-three Christmas tree lighting.
And I definitely wanna thank my phenomenal team because, um, the weather, we were, um, having inclement weather. And we moved at tree lighting literally within a two hours timeframe. So thank Parks and Rec for the stage and just all the hands on deck that made that happen.
And the young man that works with you, uh, heard the voice. He has a broadcaster's voice. Simeon, that was him.
Award-winning team. Yes, award-winning team.
Give Simeon a round of applause. I, I heard his voice. I sound like a national broadcaster. That was very good. He's got talent.
Yes, that was his second year in a row emceeing. Thank you, Commissioner Washington. We know the others, um, had other previous arrangements. But thank you guys for coming out. The community, we had over three hundred and fifty citizens at that event.
Wow, it was cold at night.
It was cold outside. Yes. We have one more, um, one more video, but can I call up Ms. Bonner? She wanna talk about that video, the turkey giveaway. Really quick.
I'm taking away all my comments. My, my boy.
Oh, you wanna comment?
No, go ahead. I'm, I'm still gonna comment. Okay, well, thank you, first of all, Chairman Nesta. Good afternoon, uh, Madam Commissioners. For allowing me to serve as your coordinator for the fifteenth annual turkey giveaway, it was a huge success. We needed four things. I said three things before, but I added one more thing. So we needed turkeys. We collected over five hundred and sixty turkeys. Thank you to all your sponsors. Thank you to all of the different teams that donated and the individuals that really donated. We thank you all. Secondly, we needed volunteers. We had fifty-five, no, fifty-eight, I believe it was, teenagers, Rockdale County students from the high schools, Heritage, Salem, as well as Rockdale, with Salem, Heritage, and Rockdale. We also had students from Elka, Yak, um, all over, um, that participated, as well as adults that helped with volunteering. So that was a huge success as well. We also had, um, the seniors. The seniors came out and they were blessed, and that was the main thing. We wanted turkeys. The seniors matter, and we wanted to make sure that they had a, a huge plump turkey for Thanksgiving. And then the last thing that we needed were freezers. And, uh, we wanna thank, uh, Courtesy Ford, as well as Jasper, uh, Package, as well as, uh, the Fire Department.
Yes.
I wanna shout out to Chief Mack. She really helped me at the very end. I needed freezers. And she made sure that all of our freezers were kept cold. Uh, I would like to thank everyone that participated, and I thank you for allowing me to lead.
Well, stand tall and stay right there because they're gonna show the video. Stay right there, Ms. Bonner.
Hello, I am Stacy Bonner Lewis, the project chairman this year, our coordinator for Chairman Oz's fifteenth annual turkey giveaway for our seniors. We have had an abundance of turnout. We've had numerous teenagers come out from Rockdale, Heritage, as well as Salem High School. The faces that gave out the turkeys were our youth, were our leaders that are gonna be, our leaders of tomorrow. This has been an awesome event. We've collected over five hundred and seventy turkeys. Thank you for the community for donating.
Our senior citizens, they matter. They're on a fixed income. This year, the people of Rockdale County, all of our sponsors, all of our local citizens chipped in and donated and made sure that all of our seniors throughout Rockdale County will have a happy Thanksgiving.
I'm privileged because the chairman understands what it's like to give back to the pillars of our community, and that's our seniors. Listen, the seniors have always been close to my heart, so whenever there's an opportunity to give back to the ones that raised us and taught us, I'm always here. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and big ups to our chairman for having the vision to make sure that we give back to our seniors.
Hey, Rockdale, how you doing? My name's Alonzo Haran Jr., your chief code enforcement officer. Today we are giving about five hundred turkeys to the community of Rockdale. People came out. We got volunteers. We got about a hundred high school kids here celebrating with us. Some brave, be thankful for life, joy, and everything. We looking forward to Christmas and to a whole happy new year of two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you.
Give them a round of applause. Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Bonner Lewis, and thank you for your leadership. Uh, I, I have to say this while she's standing. Uh, we've done this for fifteen years now, but this is, there's never been a year that we've collected this number of turkeys. And the number of young people that have been a part of the giving, the young people been a part of, and I have to tell you, we, Ms. Lee and I, uh, probably at this point, eight to ten email, uh, responses back from young people saying, thank you, it was fun, we appreciate it, and, and, and hey, we standing ready to, to volunteer, uh, some more. And that's great news when young people send the emails and they were a part of it, and they're looking forward to even more community service. So keep up the good work. Thank you again. Give her another round of applause. Absolutely. Absolutely. I think we're gonna push forward here and, um, move into public comment.
So, Mr. Chairman, just one more announcement before we go into public comment, which I know we have to get to, but I just wanted to say that we've got our good friend here with us from Senator Warnock's office, Katrina Cochran. We have a meeting after this, and she was so gracious to come join us in the meeting today to see what's going on in the community. I just love that we have partnerships like that, so.
Ms. Cochran, I saw you when you walked in. We appreciate you and the work that Senator Warnock is doing and paying attention to Rockdale County. We talked about the fact that we're the second smallest county in the state, and certainly that we're never gonna be falling into crack. And we appreciate the senator and your representation in making sure you connect with our Government Affairs Executive Director, Jennifer Rutherford. So I know y'all gonna have a great meeting. Give him another, Senator Warnock in his office, a round of applause. Absolutely. Absolutely. Alright.
Back on track. Okay, so we do have two public comments, one that is in person, another one that has requested that we read it. Um, on their behalf, they were not physically able to, to come to a meeting, so.
So let's start with the one that's in person. I'm gonna go ahead and call up, this gentleman's been waiting. We've had a long, uh, meeting today. Uh, I'm gonna call up
Do you want me to read the disclaimer?
Read the disclaimer if you would. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments relative to any issues that are currently going through the public hearing process, matters that are in active litigation, political campaigning, or partisan politics will not be heard in this meeting. Speakers are addressed to chairman, not each other, or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers and/or members of the audience shall be permitted.
Thank you so much, Executive Director. Mr. Chip Newman, come on up, Mr. Newman. Mr. Newman, longtime resident of Rockdale County, has been a big supporter and, uh, participant, uh, active over at the, uh, Johnson Park at the swimming pool. Mr. Newman, good morning.
Good morning. My goodness, there's so much positive PMA in this room. I hate to be the damper of it.
Well, you won't be. We won't let it happen, but we'll hear from you. Go ahead.
Let's take our rose-colored glasses off and let's talk about the stormwater department. This is my issue and my problem with the stormwater department this year. I got my tax bills for two properties that I still own as a business in Rockdale County. They were both wrong. I found out after going through this tax department that it was the stormwater's fault that they were wrong. Um, I went to the stormwater department at the tax department's behest, and you walk in a door, you got a ten-foot wide by twenty-foot corridor with two glass windows and a locked door. That's your interaction with the stormwater department to the public, through glass and a locked door. And I got about that much help out of the stormwater department, okay? They wouldn't give me my ERUs or my square footage so I could figure out why I had been assessed on one property thirty-three hundred dollars more than the previous year, when the previous year had been six hundred and five dollars. I was told then to contact the head of the department. I emailed him. And he emailed me back, and I explained the situation, emailed me back, and said, there's no way that this could be wrong. That thirty-nine hundred dollars is thirty-nine hundred dollars, not six hundred. We did, and thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars of a flyover check this year, so those are all correct. I sent him an email, but emailed back saying, this can't be correct. It can't have gone up that much money. He insisted, called me, uh, confirmed the properties, and that's the last time I've been able to talk to him, two and a half months ago. I've tried to talk to him over and over and over again over the last two months and not ever been able to get been able to get him to call me. I had to go through, they assigned a woman named Fiala Harris, did a good job. The first thing she did in a meeting was say, we got a thirty-three hundred dollar mistake on your account. We're going to correct it. What about my other property? No apology, just we're going to correct it. And it was wrong. They were wrong. He was wrong, okay? Assured me I was wrong. He was wrong. The next property, they did that flyover and they were fifty percent wrong on my square footage, but still couldn't get my square footage until I met with Fiala. Kline came out, we took care of it, measured it out, got twelve thousand, eleven thousand instead of eighteen thousand linear feet like the flyover showed. And Fiala was supposed to submit it. Seven weeks later, she did not submit it. It took me until last week for the, basically the tax department to get it fixed because nobody at the stormwater department would deal with me, okay? I needed to sell that property by next week and I needed all of that corrected. Couldn't get it until last week. Still waiting for a phone call from this gentleman here. Never got one. I think I'm owed an apology for what I had to go through to fix all the issues. This is part of your fault for putting the stormwater department in the tax department where they charged me penalties and interest on my stormwater fees.
Well, I want to say, first of all, thank you for being here this morning. And I want to give you a Rockdale County Chairman Oz Nesbit apology. I want to apologize for any inconvenience. I want to make reference to some of the people that you were making reference to, Mr. Newman. That is Director Simkins. The young lady you referenced in the office is Ms. Harris, Ms. Fiala Harris. Let me say, as I often talk about the fact that we are in the people business, and being so, we are human. Sometimes we do make mistakes. And one of the things I also say is that leadership is ownership. We have to own it. So we own it. We apologize to you. And I want to also say to you, I've had interaction with you over the years, that if you have an issue, and anyone out there that has an issue, that you don't feel this getting resolved in the way that you think is equitable, then you to contact my office and make me aware. Hearing this in this open forum and setting here today is the first time I've heard directly from you regarding this particular issue. But again, I can hear it in your voice. I can hear it, see the look on your face. So I sincerely apologize to you for any errors or mistakes our department or staff has made. And obviously, there has been some mistakes according to what I'm hearing from you. After today, I will make sure, Chief Sanders, that you take a thorough look into this and work with Director Simkins to do a follow-up and a follow-through on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and the Office of the Chairman to make sure that we're being fair and equitable with Mr. Newman. In the future, if you come across an incident or an accident or case, situation where you don't feel like you're getting fair and equitable treatment, I encourage you to work and collaborate with our department directors, in this case, Director Simkins. If you don't feel like you're getting where you need to go, you can get ahold of my office. The beauty of being in Rockdale County, you have a chairman that's responsive. I don't want to know that anybody is being mistreated or having some impartial treatment coming through any one of our departments or divisions. Again, I apologize to you on behalf of Rockdale County as a whole, our stormwater management department. If there's more to this story that I need to look into, I want to make sure that you make your way over to my office and we set up an opportunity so we can take a deeper dive. In the meantime, I've asked that Chief Sanders follow up with you as well as Director Simkins in terms of how we can fix, make a wrong or right. So thank you for coming out this morning. I hear you loud and clear. Again, I apologize to you and we certainly apologize for your inconvenience on any, on any level coming from Rockdale County. But please keep in mind, in the future, if you encounter such treatment or any type of ill feelings, contact us. We want to be able to serve you and respond to your need. You've been here a long time, Mr. Newman. You know who the players and the people are that run the community and run the county and certainly you know how to get ahold of my office without a shadow of a doubt. So reach out and thank you for coming. We'll make sure that we follow up with you.
Thank you. I would not be here today if I'd been able to work with him.
Okay, and let me just say this to you. I'm going to make sure that you can work with Director Simkins. You know, one of the things that Mr. Newman, that I have learned and I repeated this on several of our BLC meetings, it's important that staff has a level of respect for the citizens that they're engaging with. And it's also important that the citizens also have that same level of respect for the people they're working with. He's the director of the department. In fact, Director Simkins, please stand. He is a department director who this Board of Commissioners has put in charge of that department. If there is some wrongdoing on behalf of his leadership, that's where you contact me. I can assure you that Chief Sanders will look into it with the Director Simkins and she will also communicate with you. My assurance this morning is to let you know that if you ever have an infraction or a field violated, contact my office and we'll make a wrong or right. I apologize. But the level of respect in terms of how we communicate it to our people, whether we're talking to Director Simkins or Mrs. Fiala Harris, we have to remember that respect goes both ways. I thank you for being a fine citizen of Rockdale County and understanding where I'm going because we've had these conversations before. So in the meantime, if there's anything else that we can assist you with, please don't hesitate and have a happy holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, okay.
All right, Mr. Chairman, we have one more public comment and I will read it aloud for the board meeting today. This is submitted by Mr. Bob Balla. Him and his wife, they both own Copy Central. They did a letter to the editor and he asked that we read it out loud, so it goes like this. Don't support a change in Rockdale's government. Dear editor, recently our state-elected representative for Rockdale County are advocating new legislation on a failed issue from last year. Why? It's all about spending more money. They want to increase our Board of Commissioners to five members with huge pay increases for all five. Then they want to hire an even higher pay grade manager to run our county government. Of course, we have to say no in that. He has hired help accountable to the board, not directly to you or the rest of us. I am not even sure that any of these representatives live in Rockdale as our neighbors. Each of them represents just a piece of the county. I have to ask again, why? Why? What's in it for them? I know what's in it for us. Just look at Newton County. They have five and a county manager who runs things. All I see every week is them fighting to one-upmanship each other to refusing to support the county manager. If that's not enough, look at DeKalb. No, don't. It's more of the same. Bickering, backbiting, and just dysfunction. Now, these same legislators who want to increase our Board of Commissioners are the same legislators who represent those counties. We are the second smallest county in the whole state of Georgia. Athens Clark is the smallest, but they have one thing we don't, UGA. While we don't favor the board we have, increasing is not the answer to what we need. Instead of allowing developers to ask for changes to the zoning, for more townhomes, et cetera, we need more businesses to help offset the coming increases in the budget that these legislators are advocating for those who live here. Just say no. Bob Balla Conyers.
Thank you, Executive Director Rutherford, and thank you, Mr. Newman, for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Same thing to Mr. Balla. He and his wife operate Copy Central there on Parker Road. Sort of do appreciate the feedback from our community in the form of public comment. At this time, I want to move forward to board comment and we will start with Commissioner Washington.
I'm going to, I had a lot, but it's one o'clock, so we're going to consolidate this a little bit. But I do want to start off with talking about something that our development authority did. We had a, our sec, it might be our third retreat this summer, and in the retreat, as a part of our team-building exercises, we created bikes. So we had, we got into groups and we had, we raced to build bikes. And we built three bikes, so we had three teams and we all built a bike. My team actually won. I just wanted to put that on the record. And then after they were inspected and everything was tightened up, we gave the bikes to elementary school children. And each elementary school, I think Sims was one, I forgot the second one, but High Tower Trails was the third one. Each school had a different criteria on who, what child won the bike. I didn't get to go to the first two bike giveaways, but I got to go to the one at High Tower Trails Elementary School. So at High Tower Trails, the principal asked that the third, fourth, and fifth graders write an essay on the meaning of thankfulness. So she had two hundred essays. She says she read all two hundred essays. She had twenty-five honorable mentions. And then from those twenty-five, ten of the top ten, so the twenty-five honorable mentions, they received a certificate and a free book voucher. The ten top finalists received the same thing. Plus, we added Chick-fil-A gift cards. And then the final one, the winner of the essay contest received the bike on top of everything. And she read his essay. His essay talked about everything from him being grateful that he's so smart, to him being grateful for his mother. But the most important thing that he was so grateful for was his grandmother because she was the one who takes him to the library and takes him and makes him sausage breakfasts every morning for him to go to school. It was absolutely wonderful. But I just wanted to give a shout out to the Development Authority for doing something so innovative and such and different. Also, they also gave five hundred dollars to each one of the schools so that they can use it as they need for whatever the principal thinks that they need. So that's just something very different that our Development Authority was doing that I haven't heard anywhere else in the state of Georgia. So very proud of that. And let me say this also, if you have not visited one of our schools in this county, I believe, I ask you to go and visit a school because once you go and see those children and interact with them, and see the principals and the staff, you will get it. You will get all of the work that's been going on in these school systems. One of the most impressive things about High Tower Trail was the fact that the children were cheering for each other. Every, every name that was read, it sounded like a stadium was in there cheering for each other when they received their prize. So please, if you don't, if you have, if you want your heart warmed, go visit one of these schools in our county because it's definitely worth it. Okay, the next thing was the Christmas lighting. Oh my goodness, we had a good time. They didn't show the picture of me and we had the clerk of court and the tax commissioner. We were all out dancing to the.
Was there something they could show?
Yes, 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 because I had KJ with me, so I was, I was big mama. So they had, we, we had a good time having a ball at the Christmas tree. Simeon was amazing. When I walked in, I told him, I was like, we, who knew? And he can sing, he can actually really sing. But I did want to thank House of Fire for their donation of those bikes. When you saw the, this one young man who received the bike and I'm standing right in front of him, I'm right behind him, he would not take his hand off of that bike. He would not let anybody near that bike. He was so excited to have that bike. He was trying to figure out how he was going to get it home, but he was, if he had to ride it home, he was going to ride the bike home. The children, once again, that performed, they were amazing. They did even some old school, the Run DMC, Christmas carols. We had a good job. Thanks to PR, that was an amazing thing. We thoroughly enjoyed it. The Turkey Drive, Ms. Bonner, you did an amazing job with that. I did, was I had my little crew of helpers and they, once again, amazing. I think two of them went to the magnet school and one of them was a, she went to West Georgia and she came back because she wanted to volunteer. So she, just amazing. Everybody was so excited and it was very well organized. So that was great. Let's see. Light the World Christmas. So I had the opportunity to visit the Light of the World Christmas. It's a giving program. It's at the Interlock, it is in Atlanta. But what it is, is they have these vending machines and they have these little cards and you can spend maybe twenty dollars and the twenty dollars might go to buy some chickens for a group in Africa. Or you can spend seventy-five dollars and treat someone to a week's worth of daycare, or you can buy baby clothes or different things. And so I was very, very appreciative of the invitation that I got to participate in that. And so this year, instead of giving gifts, I'm going to donate at Light of the World in people's names. So KJ will be giving somebody some baby clothes or something like that. So very excited about that opportunity. And that's something that I hope that by hearing this, more people look up the Light of the World. You can look at it online. I don't have the email address on me, but I'm sure if you look up Light of the World Christmas donations, you will be able to find it. And if you want to go down there, they have a great Christmas setup at the Interlock in Atlanta and they have the vending machines down there also. Did also want to say that fire department hurt us. I know that they're doing a neighborhood blitz at Fieldstone on this Saturday after the fire is coming this Saturday. They were going to do it last weekend, but they had inclement weather. So it's going to be this Saturday so that they're giving out the fire, the fire detectors, making sure that we have our residents well taken care of there. So thank you once again to outstanding fire department for hearing the residents, making sure that they're safe. Uh, let's see. I think did all of tree lighting. I was going to talk about Grady Jarrett, but we've already taken care of that. And that's all I have until I get reminded of something by Commissioner Lewis.
See, I always appreciate going second because I write things down as you're talking. First, I wanted to mention the microtransit program and the timeline we didn't talk about because as I recall in reading the plan, the microtransit is set to begin in 2024. And that will really be, you know, I mean, that's just moving right ahead, moving forward very quickly.
So we might be able to microtransit to wheel apart for the summer concerts.
Yes, maybe so. So I, anyway, so I wanted to mention that timeline just because I think it's very progressive and moving forward quicker than, you know, so many times we talk about plans that are down the road, but this one is, you know, right here upon us. I wanted to, I wanted to mention the work that Commissioner Washington has done in economic development. It's phenomenal.
Thank you.
And you could see her excitement and her engagement with that as Kevin Hannah was giving us that presentation this morning. I love to hear what all is going on and how much involved she has been. And, you know, as I finished the Colin Powell Executive Leadership, High Performance Leadership Program, I thought about, one of the things they talk about is not listening to the naysayers. Because I know she was telling me that people, you know, in economic development were saying, why are you spending so much money and going to Boston? "Why are you spending so much money and going to Boston?" Well, you could see the result of that from the presentation today of how that investment in putting Rockdale out there has already gotten two or three uh, recommendations from the state to us because they know we're serious. They know we're professional about what we're doing. And that's, you know, that's invaluable.
Thank you.
That's really invaluable. So, then it made me think about how, you know, in, I know in the city council, each one of them has a different assignment that they work on and we don't have formal assignments, but we've kind of separated and emphasized according to our own strengths.
Yes.
And I, and I just, I, that really impressed me this morning. Chairman, I know that you have given a lot to our infrastructure.
Absolutely.
And coming in, looking at the, the buildings, the, the sewer, the water, the, the, you know, employees and all, the, the entire thing, um, and how you've worked really hard to bring that um, in, into the 21st century and, and to bring it up, and I appreciate that so much. And then I was thinking, well, okay, so what is, you know, what is my focus? Well, it's, it's really been in social services.
Oh, my goodness.
But I think the thing, the thought that really struck me is how interrelated every one of those is. Um, they just all work together and I really appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this board and the opportunity to serve the citizens and, and this comprehensive outlook for um, the county and moving the county forward. Um, um, I guess my last one is, I went down to the Interlock this last week, a few days ago, to um, the Light the World uh, vending machines. I, I purchased two goats. Um, that uh, and thirty-six chickens. And as I was watching a video yesterday, when they're giving, th- those are both from international groups, those will both go to uh, communities and families in Africa. I'm not sure which countries, but somewhere Sub-Saharan, I do believe. Um, I, I thought it was interesting, when they give a family a goat, one goat can't do anything. I mean, you can't produce, you can't produce milk, you know, but they give them two goats, they give them so that they have one of each and they can then reproduce. And so, the family that receives that can then, they have milk to drink, they have milk to sell, they have the baby kids that they can then sell, and it creates an economic boon for those families. Mostly, they go to women who then use that to support their families. The same thing with the chickens. Um, within a year, four chickens, it's one rooster and three hens, they just had all these chicks running everywhere. And it's, again, it's the same thing. And it, it's that idea of thinking globally, I think, and the impact that, that we can have. So, um, the families that are getting those, that in their name, I donated them in their name, they're getting from me a little stuffed goat and a little stuffed chicken. That while they don't need a stuffed goat and a stuffed chicken, they can then donate those to a children's drive. Um, and then the other thing that I purchased was two activity kits for girls because those, um, the girls don't get an education unless they can pay for it. And those activity kits will help with their education. Um, so, my four youngest little granddaughters will, those were donated in their names. But, you know, it was just interesting, there are three um, charities locally that are benefiting from it.
Good.
Everything from five dollars to buy a round-trip MARTA ticket to two-hundred-and-forty dollars to buy someone a kitchen table with chairs as they are maybe coming out of incarceration or out of homelessness and are setting up an apartment. Um, it, it, it was an opportunity to really warm my heart. You can go online, it's lighttheworld.org and contribute generally, not to those specific projects, but to those specific uh, organizations. You can make a general donation that they can use. But if you wanna have some fun and look at those um, uh, what, what they actually have to offer, they're, they have a Facebook page, Light the World, Atlanta to Charlotte. The vending machines will be here in Atlanta until the 12th, through the 12th, and then they're moving for two, the next two weeks to Charlotte, North Carolina. Um, and so, so, there's three organizations, charities in Atlanta, three organizations in Charlotte, and then two worldwide, global charities. But it's, it's just a time to um, really think about whatever your religion, whatever your beliefs, you know, it's, it's a time to think about giving and, because that is the basis of all religions. It doesn't matter what religion it is. It's about loving your neighbor, about charity and about giving. And you'll find that in Islam and Juda- Judaism, you'll find that in Hinduism, it doesn't matter what, besides Christianity, it doesn't matter. That, giving and charitable stuff is part of the foundation of all of those religions. So, um, Merry Christmas.
Commissioner Washington, any last thoughts?
No, everybody's hungry, so.
Well, I'm not gonna delay. I think we've had a very robust meeting today. It's been a very positive meeting today. I do want to reiterate very quickly, um, thank you to the gentleman that sent in the letter that um, Executive Director Rutledge read. Thank you to Mr. Chip Newman, again, for being here this morning and expressing and explaining and sharing with us, and we're certainly going to follow up with you. Once again, I want to apologize for any inconvenience on part of the county. We're gonna do what we need to do to make that right. So, thank you for coming out this morning and we heard you loud and very clear. Uh, to all of our departments and uh, department leaders, uh, thank you today for your presentations and the work that you're doing. Uh, we have one more meeting uh, to wrap up this calendar year. Uh, I, this meeting has been long today, robust as I described it a moment ago, and I think that's a testament to what we're looking for and anticipating uh, next week as we have our final meeting of the year. Today is a work session. This was necessary that we go through the people's business, line item by line item. There are so many wonderful things that are happening all throughout Rockdale County and that's because we have so many wonderful people in our community. And we say thank you to all of you all and all of the work that you're doing, particularly during this season of giving and sharing, as you've heard that sentiment expressed. There are so many churches and nonprofit groups and organizations, fraternities and sororities are all throughout Rockdale County that are really giving back this year, whether it's the Grady Foundation or some of those other groups of folks, they're doing a great job to make sure that we take care of the people. Uh, these have been some difficult times and a lot of people are struggling, so we say thank you to all of those who are not selfish and who are giving back to our community. And as I wrap this up and move over to uh, the chief and the executive director, I want to pause just a moment to say thank you to every Rockdale County employee because um, our employees are second to none. Uh, they go above, and y'all should be giving a round of applause right now. Absolutely. Yes, yes. They go above and beyond the call of duty and I really wanna say as chairman of the board and with my colleagues, we appreciate because you all, you all make us look good. Uh, you all are where the rubber meets the road and we really do appreciate the work that you do on behalf of this board and certainly on behalf of all the citizens in Rockdale County. I say to the citizens of Rockdale County, please ma'am, please sir, pardon our progress, be patient with us. We are human, we do make mistakes, but we like to own them and we like to hear from you. The benefit and the plus of being in Rockdale County is that you have a, a board and particularly a chairman that you can access and you can, that will be responsive to the needs of the people in our community. So, that's one of our boasting points or bragging points that we have about being the second smallest city, uh, county in the state of Georgia. I, I, I want to say again, thank you to every employee uh, who are out there working around the clock to make sure we take care of our citizens. Now, Chief Sanders, I'm gonna go with you first. Uh, is there anything I'm omitting, overlooking, uh, and I've forgotten about that we really make, need to make sure that we highlight before this meeting close out?
Uh, just one item, the holiday drop-in, just a reminder, that is next Tuesday, December 12th at 5:30 PM at JP Carr Community Room and we'll have food and Mrs. Lee has all things in the office, piles of items. She's working hard with her team on that, so wanted to mention that.
It's not like having good backup. I knew, I thought I had covered it all and Chief Sanders reminded us about the holiday drop-in. We encourage all of our citizens, all of our employees and citizens, citizens to come out uh, next Tuesday, December the 12th, over to JP Carr and participate in our holiday, our annual holiday drop-in, I must say. Uh, we certainly wanna make sure that everyone is in the uh, spirit of the Christmas holiday season. Executive Director Rutledge, uh, is there any uh, other announcements before I ask that million-dollar question?
So, since you asked me, I do wanna make one announcement. I know that probably everybody saw yesterday and today that a former resident of Conyers in Rockdale County now has a number-one Christmas hit, Brenda Lee, with Rockin' Around the Christmas Tree.
Yes.
She lived in Conyers for a little while, I mean, and now it's getting national attention. Of course, I know she was only thirteen when she wrote it and recorded it and obviously that was a long time ago, but anytime we can make a shout-out to-
And she's a rock star for Rockdale. Give her a round of applause, absolutely. That's a big deal.
That's a big deal. We'll take it, right?
Who would've known?
So, that's all I had.
All right. Well, is there any need for executive session after this meeting?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting is adjourned.